I'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. I'd like to open the meeting for the Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals. If you've not been here before, the format is fairly simple. There should have been an agenda on the back table. And basically, the way it will work is that we'll call each application up. We'll read the application into the minutes. We'll allow the applicant to present his case. We'll question the applicant. If a public hearing has been advertised, we'll open the public hearing and take input from the public. You can either do it live or a call-in. Our number is (518) 761-8225 if you opt for a call-in. And I would ask if you are calling in from the outside, please try not to interrupt whoever is speaking at the time if we have somebody from the live audience. We'll close the public hearing. We'll poll the board, see where we stand on the application, and then we'll proceed as applicable. Before we start tonight, though, we have a couple of administrative items. So, John, I'd like a motion-
I'll make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for April 21, 2021.
I'll second that.
So, that was Ron.
Yeah.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Ms. McCade?
Yes.
And also, we're going to table area variance AV 17, 2021 for Pendaville until September of 2021.
With the-
Was early, middle of-
By middle of August.
Any, yeah, any new information by the middle of August.
So, we have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Call the vote, please. That was Brad.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Ms. McCade?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Rico?
Yes.
Ms. McCade?
Yes.
So, our first applicant is AV 33, 2021, LeFatt Holdings. So, first, we're going to make a motion on this application with regard to secret.
We're going to make a motion to defer lead agency to the planning board.
So, we have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Kathy, call the vote, please.
Ms. McCade?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Ms. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Rico?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel?
Yes. So, Roy, read the application into the minutes, please. LeFatt, whoever's the representative, can come to the front here.
The applicant proposes to construct a two-four, four-unit building. Each building is to be 3,200 square feet with each unit to have a garage, two bedrooms, and a driveway onto a mannered drive. The site is to have two onsite septic systems, and each building is to be connected to water. The site plan for construction of the new multifamily home, family buildings in the neighborhood residential zone. Relief requested is for density that's in the neighborhood residential zone, and that's per section 179-3-040 dimensional. The project, proposed project is to have eight units where only one unit is allowed. The parcel size is .9 acres where a dwelling unit requires .5 acres per unit if not connected to sewer and water. In looking at the variance, we consider chapter 267 of town law and the criteria they provide. In making a determination, the board shall consider, one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of this area variance. Minor impacts to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Staff says that feasible alternatives may be available to reduce the number of dwellings proposed. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Relief request that may be considered minimal, relevant to the code. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The project will have minimal to no adverse effects or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments. The project is subject to seeker coordinated review. The planning board has requested and given lead agency. The applicant proposes to construct two-four, unit buildings. Each building is to be 3,200 square feet with each unit to have a garage, two bedrooms, and a driveway onto mannered drive. The parcel is vacant and it's currently wooded.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, John Lapper, so we weren't expecting to present tonight just because with the planning board being lead agency, they have to make a secret determination before you can act on this. So, we just figured you'd table it, but I'm certainly happy to talk about it tonight.
Sure. You're here.
The simple explanation is that everything else on mannered drive was built out in this way. This was a vacant lot at the end. The zoning has now changed, so it requires variances, but what's proposed is essentially the same as what the other buildings are. They're all rental units in close proximity to the high school, so it's, you know, basically the same thing as the rest of the neighborhood in terms of compatibility. But it does require area relief to build what they built because everything's changed.
So, do we have questions of the applicant? So, I guess my question is, why wasn't this variance granted initially? There must have been-
So, this was, this is Matt Steves and Larry Clude, and this became available when this was in an estate. It was owned by somebody else. It was the last lot at the end of the street, and it never got developed, so it was vacant, and it became available, and they said, "Like to build the same thing as, you know, what's right next door."
Questions? So, a public hearing has been advertised, so this particular-
Actually, Mike, there is no public hearing for this at this time, so it'll be, public hearing is scheduled for the following, the following meeting.
Well, then, should we have tabled this?
No. No, it's not a tabling. Your, your public hearing will actually be scheduled for the meeting in June. It's, this is, your, the only resolution you're doing tonight was this, the seeker consent form.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. I didn't understand that. So, John, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, I put you through quite a bit. Yes. So, you're all done then?
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, no. You can stay right here. You're, you're up next.
Yes, sir.
So, our next application is AV 39, 2020, Jeffrey Godnick. Mr. Chairman, do we have to table?
No, you do not have to table.
No, we did our job.
But we still need to keep this probably just in case, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, Roy, we've already read this into the record, so I guess all we need are any changes.
I'm just going to read, uh, read the revised description, which is, "The applicant proposes to maintain the 188 square foot shed that has been installed in 19, 2019. The existing home is 4,259 square feet with a floor area of 5,774 square feet. Project includes installing permeable pavers adjacent to the house, increasing permeability. The site plan, newer floor area is in a CE8 and hard surfacing within 50 feet of the shoreline. Request, uh, relief for the setbacks, floor area, and permeability."
For the record again, John Lapper, so Jeff lives two doors down from the dock side, and this was before you, and you asked that it be improved, so permeability has improved. Some pavement is being removed for permeable pavers on the east side of the house. But what this is all about, this is a shed that he uses to put all the cushions and all the summer stuff in, and if this were 120 square feet, it could be five feet from the property line, but this is 188 square feet, so it has to meet the house setback, which is 20, 20 square feet. And the house next door to the east is very unkempt, hasn't been painted in years. It's kind of just nasty woods next door, so this, for him, it blocks the view of the neighbor's house. You know, but it's, I think it's pretty minor because he could have almost this size at almost this location, you know, it was just slightly smaller, so, but he did improve the permeability if the question is required.
So, do we have questions of the applicant?
So, he improved the permeability up to 69 percent, where he was originally granted, the original-
Yes.
Okay.
It was 68 percent.
It was 64 something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, a public hearing has been advertised. Am I right there? Laura?
Correct.
Okay. So, at this particular time, oh, and I made a mistake. I opened a public hearing for the last application, or I didn't do that?
It's irrelevant. You didn't, it's irrelevant.
All right. So, at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this application and invite applicant, or anybody on the outside who wants to call in with regard to this application to give us a call at (518) 761-8225. Is there anybody that would like to address this application that's in the audience right So, we've got to wait for two minutes to allow people from the outside to call in.
This is from Catherine Flower. You can leave this in, or maybe this is in the audience already that wants to present.
Did we read that in the last?
No, this is May 18.
Oh, okay, then, yeah, go ahead and read it. That'll take up the two minutes.
This is from Catherine Flower. Dear Board members, we represent Erin McNeil, who is a joining neighbor to the above referenced project site. On her behalf, we request that you deny the application for all the after the fact area variances for the structure located at 312 Glen Lake Road. In 2019, the property owner placed a 188 square foot large structure on his property within, first, without first obtaining the four variances needed to comply with the town of Queensbury laws. These four variances are: variances, variance on the percent of the permeable surfaces, variance on the percent of floor area, setback variance for the shoreline, and setback variance from the side yard boundary. This letter focuses mainly on the variances related to the percent of impermeable surface and the side yard setback. In 1995, this property was granted variances included for impermeable surface area. After that variance was granted, the applicant made additional modifications to the property without obtaining variances that have further increased the impermeable surface. Now, the applicant again increased the impermeable surface area on his property without obtaining variance when he placed the structure on it. The applicant has shown a blatant disregard for the limitations of the previous variances as only before this board now because he was caught. The zoning board must consider five factors when deciding whether to grant a variance, each of which are addressed herein, although not in the order listed in the town code. Instead, we will be addressing the substantiality of the variance first. When neither variances are considered in light of these factors, it is clear that the structure does not qualify these needed variances. One, requested variances are substantial. The four area variances needed for the structure remain at its current size and location are substantial. B, the setback variance from the side yard boundary is substantial. Between an 80% to 90% reduction of the required size setback of 20 feet is needed for the structure to stay in its current location. The applicant says, the application says that the distance between the edge of the structure and the property line is 3.9 feet. However, the photos in survey excerpt enclosed show it is closer to 1.5 feet away. The first two photos are of the map of the survey for 316 Glen Lake Road, the property which Ms. McNeil has an ownership interest. Please note the location of the stone wall and iron rod relative to the boundary between 316 Glen Lake Road and the project site. Please also note that the house at 316 Glen Lake Road, which was built in the 1940s, is only in 10 feet from the boundary. The third photograph is of the iron rod, which can be seen on the survey, and the stone wall located at 316 Glen Lake Road and the applicant's structure on his property. The measuring tape indicates that the structure is less than the quoted 3.9 feet from the boundary line and is closer to 1.5 feet from it. If the applicant's numbers are correct, and it was 3.9 feet away, this would require a variance of 16.1 foot or a reduction- of 80% less than what was, is required. If the measurements from Ms. McNeil's photos are more accurate, it is over a 90% reduction in the required setback. In either case, this would be a substantial variance. The application states that this is not a substantial variance because it is a visually appropriate location. However, photos taken by Ms. McNeil from in and around her house show this is not the case. The next eight photographs show the view of the 188 square foot structure from the neighbor at 316 Glen Lake Road. The first two photos of this were taken just last week on May 13, 2021. Contrary to statements by the applicant, the structure is not adequately screened by vegetation. The structure is essentially a wall that is over 20 feet long and 10 feet tall, mere feet from the property line and barely 10 feet from Ms. McNeil's house on the lakeside part of her property. This is not a visually appropriate location as claimed. B, the variance from the percent of impermeable surfaces is substantial. Even with the recent changes made to the property granting the variance for the percent of impermeable surface for the structure would result in between 491 square feet to 657.5 square feet, more of impermeable surface than this board authorized in 1995. Either would be a substantial deviation from what's approved in 1995, let alone the standard in the code. One, errors and omissions in the application must be corrected prior to review by the board. Applicant's new materials under count of the amount of impervious surface on the property erroneously treating new paving materials as 100% permeable. This must be corrected before the application for variance for percent. Permeability can be reviewed. The applicant has replaced the 687 square foot area on the side of the house with tough stone, which at most could earn that area 50% credit for its permeability, which is 343.5 square feet. However, the calculations written on the plan treat the material as 100% permeable and reduces the impervious macadam parking driveway figure by the entire 687 square feet. This erroneously reduced the percent of the calculated, uh, calculated impervious area on the property. Similarly, the 332 square feet foot deck area under the hot tub was replaced with short step. Based on the materials available, it is unclear whether this earns the area any credit to its permeability. Calculations in the most recent plan treats this new material as 100% permeable and reduces impervious concrete walks and curbing figure by the entire 332 square foot. Unless the application has completely removed the hot tub and deck area around it, that is an error. These errors undercounted the percent of impervious surface at between 509.5 square feet to 675.5 square feet. The recent map shows that if the proposed structure is allowed to remain, the property would be 69% permeable, when in reality, with the new structure, the property would be only between 65.8 to 66.6% permeable. Recent remedial actions by the applicant do not bring the property into compliance with the 1995 variance. In the 1995, the applicant was granted a variance that would allow for the reduction from the minimum 75% permeable cover to just 69% permeable cover. As seen in the, in the map in applicant's 2020 application, the amount of impermeable surface on the property increased from the allowed 69% permeable cover to just 65% permeable cover by 2019 without additional variances. The 1995 to 2019 increase in impermeable, impermeable surface from 31% to 35% was due to the addition of the new paved area on the east side of the house that has access to the basement via garage door and an impermeable patio walkway and hot tub area. This is contrary to the argument raised by the applicant representative at the October 2020 meeting, that the additional impermeable surface is due to the basement not being counted. After the recent changes, the percent of permeable cover without the proposed structure would be between 66.7% and 67.5%. Thus, these recent changes do not bring the property back into compliance with the 1995 variance, even without the structure. Ms. McNeil appreciates the applicant's belated attempt to reduce the runoff from the property. However, this inadequate remediation does not merit receiving variances on top of the existing violation. In fact, these should probably undergo separate review for additional after the fact variances. The percent permeability variance needed is substantial. If the structure is allowed to remain, the property would only be between 65.8% to 66.6% permeable. This is at least 8.4% less than the 75% minimum required by the town in the critical environmental area and 2.4% less than allowed by the 1995 variance. Small project by small project, the applicant is slowly overburdening his property. This structure is merely the latest project that the applicant instructed without a variance that increases impermeability of the property. Ms. McNeil is merely asking that the latest violation not be condoned. This variance is substantial, and the failure of this factor alone should lead to denial of this variance. C, variance on the percent of the floor area is substantial. Within the addition of the structure of the property, the floor area will total 5,962 square feet or 29% of the total parcel area. This is a substantial variance from the maximum 22% authorized under the town code in the waterfront residential zone and the 26% covered, coverage approved by the town in 1995. In 1995, this board approved a 4,378 square foot residence and a 900 square foot garage for a total of 5,278 square feet of floor area. This itself is over the 22%, 22% allowed in the waterfront residential zone. Since that time, the floor area of the property has increased to 5,774 square feet, not including the proposed structure. Counsel for the applicant has suggested that this, this increase is because the town code at the time did not include basements and calculating floor area. However, the actual resolution from 1995 explicitly addresses the basement. The applicant proposed to construct a residence of 4,378 square foot feet, of which 3,000 square feet is living space, the remainder of which is basement utility area. In addition, a 900 square foot attached garage is proposed, record of resolution for variance filed number 71-1994. Like the increase in the amount of impermeable surface, this 496 square foot increase is likely due gradual legal expansions on the property, not exclusion of the 1,378 square foot basement utility area. There are four variances being constructed by the applicant in order to leave the unlawfully constructed structure in place.
Mr. Chairman? Is there, is there, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, it's up to the board if you want to read some highlights. I don't know how many pages are in here.
How much more do we have?
I mean, what? I'd be in favor of a summary of highlights.
I have three more. Well, I can't summarize 10 pages that quickly.
All right. So, let me, let me summarize this.
There's three more pages.
All right. Let me summarize this. Our consideration tonight is simply the shed. We can't really go back and undo whatever was done in the, in the past. We can certainly consider it for the overall, but we're not going to address mistakes that were made other than the addition of this shed. Is that fair to, to say?
All right. So, I mean, to some point, the board did ask this applicant to go back and take a look at permeability, which the applicant did-
Yeah.
-and that information's in front of you. I mean, that, that's what this board asked. That's why it's been tabled to this point, is to discuss the shed and see if the applicant could do a little better on the permeability. So, I think you could move forward-
Yeah. So, the other pertinent fact here is that we do have a licensed surveyor indicating that the shed is indeed 3.9 feet from the property line, and that's what we would normally go by.
Correct.
Plus, they're stating the 69% permeability, which they're saying not.
So, I want to just weigh in on that because they had read Laura's notes. Jeff did change out the material under the hot tub to make it better, but Laura didn't give him credit for it the way Queensbury does permeability, and that was in her notes. And we did take half, you know, half the credit for changing out the permeable pavers because that's how Queensbury does it. So, you know, this was all run through the planning department, and it made it better than it was last time, and that's a lot of words over a shed. There's obviously something neighbor to neighbor, and the people next door, it's like 12 cousins that now own it from the grandparents, and this is the only one who's objecting of the 12 owners, but, you know.
So-
The last week, you had a family member that came here in support of it. That was part of that group.
Right. Exactly. And that's, that's their side of the fence, but-
Right. So, at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with Jim.
Yeah, I was basically in support, full support of this application the last time, and I think the only issue, you know, I think that there's been, the applicant has proposed increases in the permeability, which is a plus as far as I'm concerned. I think the only alternative would be, you know, you could move the shed anywhere in the yard, it's still going to be out of compliance, whether you put it over on Chappa's side or the side that it's currently proposed at. I've paddled by it numerous times. I think because you have the hedgerow, you know, like leading down to the water's edge, I think that, that basically mitigates any view from the lake. So, the neighbor, as I mentioned before previously, is a slightly higher level lot, you know, the ground level above, so I don't really see that it impedes the view to the lake or anything like that, so I think I would be in favor of the application.
Kathy?
Well, I, I think the last time we did discuss it, from that discussion, we determined that the shed really wasn't that much of an imposition. I guess I would vote in favor. I don't think that was a really large increase to the permeability, and I am, you had a 69, and you went down, and I'm really not a fan of this after the fact business, but I think that basically the shed is, appears to be buffered well, so I guess I'll vote in favor.
Brett?
I'm in favor of the project. I have a question.
I have a question, though, and I.
Sure.
Okay, so the question I have is, does sure step allow to permeability? Because in the letterwork, they're referencing that it does not, and I want to understand.
Well, it says in our notes that it's fifty percent.
So tough step, so the different products, so one, if something's considered a decking, so Trex Deck.
Yep.
That's considered hard surfacing, not, there's no credit given.
No credit.
So the, even though there's space in between, consistency review. If something is considered decking, reviewed by the zoning administrator, we have not granted a fifty percent credit to decking, even though there's slats in the middle of it. What we do give credit for is items that are considered permeable pavers. This tough stone, we evaluated that, that is, it's, has, it's a gridlock pattern, and so there is permeability given to that, and our office has given fifty percent credit to that. That's why the calculations are redone and given to this board in that sense.
That letter is saying that it should not be allowed to go in. So I'm not, we're not going to talk about that. That's fine. I understand it better now. I am in full support. Permeability was increased, which is good, and the view from the lake is mitigated, which is good. You have my support.
Ron?
I was in favor of this project when it was first presented, and I think the applicant has done his due diligence and brought the permeability back to what it was before. The shed itself blends into that tree line, and it's kind of a shame that one individual goes into writing so many things and going back in time. But this project as presented, I'm in favor of.
John?
There's no doubt this family spent a lot of money on redoing that hot tub area. The shed is putting the best spot on that lot where it's not viewed by the lake, and really, if you look at the pictures, it doesn't look like it's very viewed by the McNeil family either, so I'd be in favor as is.
Roy?
Yeah, I'm going to go along with everybody else, and I'm going to be in favor of the project.
So I guess I can't break the bar here, so I'm going to support the project also. I'm impressed that the applicant did indeed follow our lead and improve permeability. So at this particular time, I'm going to ask for a motion. I'm going to ask Brett if he'd make that motion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to approve the area variance AV three-nine dash twenty-twenty, Jeffrey Godneck, tax map ID two-eighty-nine point nine dash one dash eighty-four. Zoning Board Appeals received an application for Jeffrey Godneck, which we have reviewed here this evening. Section one-seventy-nine dash three dash zero-four-zero dimensional requirements in one-seventy-nine dash five zero-two-zero sheds is what we have reviewed. And a public hearing was advertised and held on Wednesday, October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, and May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Upon review of the application materials, information supplied during the public hearing, and upon consideration of the criteria specified in section one-seventy-nine dash fourteen dash zero-eight-zero A of the Queensbury Town Code in chapter two-sixty-seven of the New York State Town Law, and after discussion and deliberation, we find as follows. There is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor detriment to nearby properties. We have a nice buffer zone from the lake with that hedge line, so that is certainly mitigated. Feasible alternatives have been considered by the board to minimize the request. Those are not possible. Permeability, as we indicated, has been increased. The requested variance is not substantial. And again, the permeability, which was increased from the previous meeting, there is not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty, while it could be self-created, it is minimal in nature. In addition, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community, I'm sorry. And the board also finds that the variance request, under consideration, is the minimum necessary. Based on the above findings, I make a motion to approve area variance thirty-nine dash two-zero two-zero, the nineteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one.
So I have a motion. Can I have a second, please? I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. Ron, call the vote, please.
So prior to you making that vote, in the staff notes, I suggested that there be an updated survey to represent the correct permeability on the site, as well as an updated site data sheet. So that's in the file. That is up to the board if you wish to make that condition.
Makes sense. Okay, so Brett, would you add that condition to the motion?
Yes, that the updated survey as well as the, I'm sorry, Laura.
Called a site data sheet.
The site data sheet is conditioned under number eight here of our notes.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Erika?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
John Newwood?
Yes.
I mean, that it?
Yep, yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes. Congratulations, you have a project.
Thank you, I'm not giving up this spot yet.
Oh, I didn't realize you were the third man.
The projects all start at different ones, but sometimes they all end on the same line.
So our next application is AV twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-one. Although we've had this application before, we're going to treat this as a new application right now, so we're going to start from scratch. So Roy, would you read the application into the record?
The applicant proposes to construct an eight hundred and eighty-four square foot living room slash kitchen addition to the west of the existing primary dwelling. The project includes construction of a four hundred and thirty-six square foot breezeway addition to the south of property dwelling, connecting the structure with an existing detached garage and replacing the roof on the garage. The project also includes construction of a new detached garage, one thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet floor area with a six hundred and seventy-two square foot workshop, which would include two levels, storage of vehicles on the lower level and a workshop above. The site plan for the new floor area is in a C.A., new building within fifty feet of the fifty percent slopes, expansion of a non-conforming structure, and major stormwater. Relief requested is for shoreline setback, height of detached garage, height of the alterations to the main home, number of garages, and size of the garage. And that's per section one-seventy-nine dash three, year zero-four-zero dimensional. One-seventy-nine dash five dash zero-two-zero garage. One-seventy-nine dash thirteen dash zero-one-zero expansion of non-conforming structure. One-seventy-nine dash two dash one, zero-one-zero garage, private parking. The single-story addition to the main home is to be located fifty-six point six feet from the shoreline, where a seventy-five foot setback is required. The two-roof dormer addition to the home area is to be thirty-three feet, six inches, where twenty-eight feet is the maximum height allowed. The new garage is to be twenty-one feet, four inches in height, where an accessory structure is limited to sixteen feet. Relief is also requested to have more than one garage and size of the garage. One thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet floor area, where the maximum size allowed on the lot would be one thousand one hundred square feet. Looking at the criteria, minor to no impacts to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be limited due to the orientation of the existing building on the parcel, parcel shape, and parcel topography within seventy-five feet of the shoreline for height and setback. The second garage may be eliminated to reduce the number of garages, although the second garage is storage and workshop for classic vehicles. The relief request may be considered minor for the residential request, and substantial for the second garage request is relevant to the code. Relief for second-story additions to the main home is eighteen point four feet. Relief for the two-roof dormer additions is five point six feet inches in excess. New garage relief is five feet, four inches in excess. Relief is also requested to have more than one garage and the size of the garage. The project may be considered to have minimal impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the area, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes residential additions to the main home, alterations to portions of the three floors, connecting the existing detached garage with a new roof orientation, then constructing a detached garage. The project includes new stormwater controls, site work to reduce runoff, and landscaping for the site. The plans show the addition of the portion of the dormer roof additions that are above the twenty-eight feet that match the existing structure height. There are elevation views on floor plans for the proposed work on the home and in the garage. The second garage is presented as a workshop for antique vehicles.
Okay, again, for the record, John Lapper, the grass meters are here, the whole project team is here, so even though you've heard this before, our goal tonight is to re-present the whole thing so that the record is complete. When we were here the first time, I think the board was more focused on the garage, because that's what you were more concerned about.
That's other people's view, but, you know, so I think to straighten this out, I think we should go through each of the other variances and make sure that we understand everything about.
So I'm just going to make some general comments and then have Trevor go through. We've written out exactly, so it's complete for the record. But in terms of the improvements to the house, with the APA standard of practical difficulty, this is taking, you know, nineteen twenties design home to turn it into a permanent year-round structure for the family. It's architecturally significant, and the goal here is to enhance the architecture and keeping with the original design. The constraints, as Laura mentioned in the staff notes, because the lake is on two sides of the house, in terms of setbacks, and when it was built, there wasn't a seventy-five foot setback, the constraints are to make some livable, living space that works with the layout of the house itself, but we think that what's being requested in the house is extremely minor. The dormers are just architect, I mean, bring lighting, obviously, but they're going to thirty-three feet just to match what's already there, so it's just to make it architecturally correct. You know, and it's not like we're talking about thirty-three feet for a whole structure, it's little tiny dormers. And the inside living space addition is just to make space that's usable, and there was nowhere else to put it because of the grade in the back and where the lake is. So again, we think this is very modest, and just that, you know, obviously, we need to have a thorough record and a thorough resolution on this, so I'm going to ask Trevor to come up and go through the math, so it's all on the record.
So just for the record, what is the setback of the house right now?
It is fifty-six.
Fifty-six point six.
So that's not going to change? Okay. And what is the height of the house right now?
Oh, existing, sorry. Current shoreline setback. Brandon Burgers is from EDP. The current shoreline setback is fifty-nine point one feet, and we're proposing it to be decreased a little bit to fifty-six point six.
Okay.
And just one corner of the house, kind of, just because of the position of the, you know, where the lake kind of wraps around there, that corner of the house would get a little bit closer to the lake now where the existing.
Sure.
Does fifty-nine point what? I'm sorry.
Fifty-nine point one is what the existing is.
Height is, existing is, well, it's still less than the existing. Our proposed dormers are less than the.
Okay, that's fine.
Less than the bridge.
Yeah.
And you'll see that in diagram while we go through that.
Trevor Flynn with Balzer Intuck Architecture, representing the grass meters at three twenty-two twenty-two Route nine L, Queensbury. I'd like to thank you guys for your time in advance, you know, and efforts for these matters. You know, my goal is to be thorough and concise, yet, you know, detailed to really walk you through all six variances, you know, as it relates to the house and the garage.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
You know, we're here based on the APA variance reversal determination letter memo dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, recommending in their conclusions section, reversal of the variance granted by the ZVA for expansion of a non-conforming dwelling on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. We've already discussed the six variances, and I'll walk you through each one. So just to reacquaint you with the project, as you'll see, this first area, the post-shade areas are the additions. This is the existing house as it currently exists, the detached garage, the proposed mudroom link from the attached garage to the living quarters, and then the kitchen, living, dining area off to the west. And as mentioned, the house is a unique house built in the summer of the nineteen twenties. Since then, the detached garage was built in two thousand and three. You know, the proposed project involves turning that existing garage into an attached garage with the mudroom link between the two structures. Another addition to the main residences proposed to provide more living space for the residents to make it a year-round home, as aging in place, you know, requires more adjacency of the programs and the possible future first-floor living bedroom as well. As mentioned, the detached garage is also being proposed, you know, as the existing is being connected to the house more for the everyday vehicles, where the detached garage is for the storage of classical cars, you know, property maintenance, and also the restoration of some of the vehicles as well. So one, you know, we don't believe this is an undesirable change and will not produce when looking at the context of the existing neighborhood and properties of the surrounding neighborhood. The residence will be expanded to meet the needs of the client, which could not be achieved in the existing footprint, and I'll walk you through that in detail. The exterior of the home was updated and provided a visual improvement to the neighborhood as seen from the lake. And you'll see we're tying the structure into the existing roof lines and keeping the overall existing form and geometry. We're removing impervious areas that currently exist where the proposed addition is, so we're kind of swapping out the impervious area of the roof for current impervious driveways which run down into the lake right now, so we're almost blocking that, and I'll detail that as well. And we're trying to stick with a harmonious, you know, historic architecture of this nineteen twenties home. The variance sought for the detached garage will not cause a detriment to the neighborhood as it cannot be seen from the road. We have a view shed diagram to show you that as well, and it cannot be seen from neighboring properties as it's surrounded by woods on both sides. All neighboring property owners have submitted letters of support for the project and the requested variances. We are seeking for both the residence and the detached garage.
Can we go to the next page?
Now, in reference to variance one, you know, modification of a non-conforming existing structure, you know, again, it was a unique home built in nineteen twenties where they didn't have the setbacks that we do today. For the year-round addition, currently, the existing garage, or existing driveway turnaround is right here, and there isn't a very proper kitchen, dining room, or entrance for the seasonal winters that we get in upstate New York. So the mudroom addition is off to the side to connect to the garage as well, and reorient some of the additional spaces, existing spaces. The proposed addition was studied at length. We are removing some of the older, non-historical additions, the one off to the back and off to the side, off to the south, I should say. And they currently do not have the mudroom, so you're every day pulling into the garage, walking into the mudroom, and then allowing yourself to get into the main space and over to the kitchen and living area. The addition, you'll see this dash line, that's the fifty-foot and then the seventy-five-foot setbacks. You know, we held the addition back from the lake facade as best we could, you know, as tying into that existing form of the existing roof, and we'll show you that in the additional slides. But the location of the addition is driven by the historical geometry of the roof of the original home. the original home. Can I go to page seven, please? So this is the existing home, you can see it's a, a unique roof structure. And then the next page, please? And this is the addition as it ties in and the view from the lake. So i- in general, the proposed addition is, is smaller in scale and volume than the, the current existing home. So you'll see the addition to the south, and this is the proposed dormer up on the third floor in reference to the height variance. Next slide, please? A view of the home from the south or the driveway. This was also that impervious driveway that we were discussing earlier where the, the truck and car is currently parked, that's where the addition is going. So, so right now, all the sheet flow and, and rain and water runs down the site, this is all ledge rock, so it doesn't really percolate into any of these areas and runs right down into the lake. So we're proposing to remove a lot of these impervious areas as we're, one, putting the addition there, two, and relocating the driveway further to the south and east areas.
That's one of the additions in the back that you were moving, correct?
This, oh, this portion?
Yes.
Yes, that is being removed. That's where the, the new front entry is, is proposed. Next slide, please? So as you noticed from the previous image, that is the existing roof form, and we are tying into that, and then turning the structure sideways in an effort to pull it back from the lake. You know, the, if, if it weren't for current zoning, the entire roof would most likely have been extended, so that entire volume, as we saw from the lake, you know, would have had a larger impact on the views from the lake and from the road, but this was order, and in order to do it more discreetly and tying into that existing roof structure. So the, we made an effort to keep this addition as far away from the lake as we could in those efforts. So I wanted to go back to the first floor plan, I think, page three, and thank you for everyone's patience, but, so we explored, page four, sorry, Laura. We explored three options. You know, the first is the expansion to the west as proposed and mentioned. To the east and to the south are other options. Of the three options studied, two of the options are not feasible due to the existing geometry of the house and site restrictions. The second option of extending the addition to the east would infringe on the side yard setback, requiring an additional variance requested, which required substantial removal of existing trees, existing utilities, including underground septic generator and AC units of the eastern side of the home, all would have not, the, which we are proposing to remain, would have to be relocated and would cost the client additional monies as well. The third option of exploring the addition to the south where the current proposed entry is would mean that the existing impervious driveway that we previously showed in this area would exist and remain. During our studies, we realized as we tried to pull back and expand this volume, the main entry would have been on this portion on the western side of the house, so we would have most likely kept and proposed to keep that circular driveway. The area of the south addition is also known for bedrock, and so more excavation, blasting would cause, major cost to the client and more disruption to the site as well. Now, architecturally, in addition to the south, would also interrupt the historic roof volume, and as seen from those previous images, we're tying into that roof trying to, and keep with the existing historical nature of the house. From a code perspective, as the roof ties in, if you go to the next sheet, please? There's, there's bedrooms. As if tying in on that side would require these bedrooms, would block the egressible windows, the light and vent to those spaces. So further enforcing our position that the addition to the south of the existing residence is the most viable option. And then, just going back to page four, thank you, Laura. As, as mentioned, to the closest point, which is here, the existing building is 59.1 feet from the shoreline. The proposed design to this corner is 56.6 feet from the shoreline. The requested variance for this additional 2.5 feet is not substantial. I believe the, the APA was wondering how much of the additional proposed square footage is within that setback. So inclusive of all the proposed patios and new-built floor space, 52.5% of that area is within that 75-foot setback. We would also like to address the, the reconfiguration of the existing stair. So currently, there is a, a step down from the existing front, or lakeside porch, down to a landing, and then a couple steps down to grade, which grade is, is higher at this point than down here. With the addition, we still need to provide egress out of the dining room and onto the porch, and then with careful study of the existing structure, we wanted to emulate that existing curve and provide the stair. And in doing so, we did not encroach further than the, the previous existing distance from the lake. Page 10, please, Laura. I would, just want to discuss the, the building height. You know, this is another area that we do not think is also substantial. Yes, thank you. So as noted, there, we're requesting 5.5 relief of the 28-feet max, so we're at 33.5 feet proposed to this dormer on the lakeside. The two dormers, none of which are overpowering to the existing main residence and, and gable. So from this diagram, you can see the darker shaded areas are, one, the proposed addition, and, two, a reconfiguration of the existing addition, which is all within the existing roof volume and less than the existing ridge. The lake northern dormer provides co-required light and ventilation for the bedroom up on the third floor. The floor area of this new dormer is also not encroaching on the 75-foot shoreline setback. The driveway southern dormer is being reconfigured to correct poor snow and water conditions. Right now, there's a lot of water and damage that's coming up into that room, so we're, we're essentially rebuilding that in place, but since we're reconstructing it, it requires a variance for that dormer. I believe that's it on the heights. So, jumping to page 19, please? And we can always go back to these elevations as needed. So, next discussion is the variance four, the second garage. You know, the propose of the second garage space is for the owner to have a place to store and restore classical cars. There's no commercial intentions for this detached garage, no rental intention as well. You will know a couple of comments that, that could inspire some comments, is there is a wood stove that's mainly for heating the space, and there's also an oven. This oven's for curing powder-coated car parts, so as he sprays, you know, smaller pieces for the engines, he puts it in the oven and heats it up and, and cur, cures it. So, i- in reference to, you know, could the benefits of the detached garage also not be met without a required variance? You know, a smaller, at the house, the smaller attached garage would not be feasible or would provide insufficient storage to the property maintenance equipment, the current everyday vehicles, and proposed classical cars that are being restored. You know, this is an important hobby to the owner, and I'm sure he, he would be willing to stand up at the end of the presentation as needed to discuss his hobby in more detail. And we also have a slide to demonstrate, you know, what it looks like when he takes apart one of these cars and, and puts it back together. There's a lot of space that is required for the, the garage area, we're requesting 148 square feet relief, 1,100 square foot is the max, so we're proposing 1,248 square feet. The attached garage is 148 feet over that limit. This variance could not be seen as substantial as 13.5% greater than 1,100 square feet. We did explore multiple options with the garage as well due to the site and the topography. We explored a, a single-story, three-car garage with the workday addition, but what happened with that is the footprint got even larger. If you can imagine this space being turned up here, it created a, a 2,000-square foot footprint, so we would have been asking for a larger variance. So the space needed, we thought it was a clever way of addressing that with the bank barn, so tucking the lower portion into the side of the existing topography with a driveway from the west and a driveway from the south to enter the, the more shop space and mechanical space with the storage down below. So we, we, we think that we put, did the most of our due diligence in creating a smaller footprint for the program that was asked by the client. Can you go to the page 21, I believe, or 20? Start with 20. Thank you, Laura. This is just a quick diagram of the view shed of where the garage placement is, and you'll see it's quite wooded on all directions around the detached, proposed detached garage. These two dots represent views as seen from the road, and there, once this garage is detect, is built, we do not see that there will be any visible appearance from the road. Next sheet, please? As for the, the height variance, you know, we did a lot to keep the height of the garage down, again, tucking the garage into the side of the hill, that bank barn technique, and also sloping the roof away. That workshop area in plan, there are some unusable spaces as the, the roof is sloping and creating almost knee-walls in the space, so there's a lot of effort and care taken in, in trying to slope the roof away, follow the topography, yet also speak to the existing historical nature of the home at the lake. I'm, I'm almost done, I promise. I also wanted to also bring up the height that's needed up on the first floor. Even if this was a one-story garage with the car lifts, you know, the car lifts go up 12, 14 feet and the car, on top of that, the structure still needs to clear the top of the car. You know, the, the client, as he's, you know, moving into his retirement age, is sick of kind of rolling around under the cars, so that the car lifts is, you know, an easier way for him to work on the cars more comfortably for lon- longer extended periods of times. So that, that height of the ridge, we believe, would be required whether it was a two-story garage or not. So that's, that's an important note. And also, we've done as, as much as we can to minimize the height of that garage, height on the first floor as well, but we're also tying into the existing topography. So these two floor levels are, are set at existing grade, and that's how we got that to work as well. I'd like to jump back to just the site plan overall. Page 18, 18, please? So, overall, you know, we think the project will also have a positive effect on the environmental conditions of the neighborhood. As the site exists, the driveway is a large area of pavement and impervious area that slopes directly towards the shoreline. The surface water runoff is currently untreated and we're proposing to treat it. The project involves removal of this paved area, in its place, the addition will be built. There is no, there will no longer be any impervious pavement within that 75-foot shoreline setback. The addition actually acts as a buffer as the water's coming down the driveway, we have one rain garden to the west, southwest, and then the addition blocks where all that runoff is currently running down into the lake. So we're, we're treating it in that area too with pervious pavers. The project also includes additional stormwater measures that do not currently exist. There is a shoreline buffer, but we're also suggesting to improve it and enhance it, adding more plantings, along with providing permeable pavers on all pathways around the house. There's also a grass swales throughout the site to direct the water. That's it for now, thank you.
You're all set?
Yep.
So do we have questions of the applicant?
Well, a couple of things came.
Go ahead.
So, in previous discussions, I mean, you're asking for a whole lot of variances here, and things get a little confusing. When somebody says, okay, here's the existing setback right now, to be very clear, we're, the addition is new, and when you build new onto a non-conforming, you know, structure, you need to comply with the latest. So you're not producing anything, the way it's in, in our numbers, it actually almost looks as though you're saying, well, here is 59 and now it's 56. No, it's 59 existing and 56, which is still significantly less than 75. And I, granted, a good portion of that is within the 75, but more than half, you said, but still, I really think it's gorgeous. The work you're doing is gorgeous. Into historic preservation, I appreciate this, but that 75-foot shoreline for new construction, I think you need to figure out a way to do better.
We're, we're just asking questions now.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're just asking questions, so.
Yeah, I would like to mention it, it is in a unique part of zoning for the town of Queensberry along the lake here. This is, you know, one of the only areas where it's, it's rural and it's a 75-foot setback compared to the more typical 50-foot setbacks that you see. And that, that was in our first design efforts, we did not want to encroach towards that 50-foot setback at all, that was kind of the holy grail, we didn't want to cross that line. So, as, you know, when we're studying those roof lines and still trying to get the floor plan to work within that geometry, that's why the, the 2.5 feet additional relief that we're requesting, we don't think is a, is a big ask as it relates to other projects, you know, on the lake.
Well, I don't look at it.
We think we're still within the spirit and intent of the.
So, so right now, just, we're just asking questions.
Well, then, one question, why is it that, that mecan driveway that you have there can't disappear regardless? I mean, why is it have to be a trail?
Part of the project is to replace it with a house and also the rain gardens, which stops the water. Trevor's point was that if we leave it, if you compare the existing to the proposed, we're fixing stormwater problems where it's running untreated directly into the lake. So there's actually an advantage to the lake of putting a building there to stop it and also rain gardens.
So if you pushed the addition back to some degree?
We still have that, we still have that driveway.
And it would have, it would have tied into the structure differently.
You need, but do you need that much driveway?
The real answer is that when you're trying to enhance an existing building, you have constraints because the building was not built 75 feet back, but that wasn't the wall.
Right.
And this was, as Trevor said, just a few feet to pick it up to make it make sense architecturally, that's really what this is about. He really went through.
Okay.
Other questions?
You mentioned the world, the word rural, just explain that a little more to me, what you meant by it.
So, so the zoning in that particular area has an APA land use classification, a rural resident, rural, I think it's called rural residential, I could be wrong, but in that particular area of the town, there's a 75-foot setback, and it, it's brought on by the APA land use classification versus the towns where the remaining portion of the town going from bay to the east side is typically a 50-foot setback.
Interesting. Thank you. Any other questions? So, public hearing has been advertised, and so at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing, see if there's anybody in the audience who has input on this particular project, and invite anybody on the outside who would like to call in and express a view on this project, give us a call at 518-761-8225. So, do we have anybody that, in the audience? Chris?
Good evening, Chris Nowitzki, Lake George Waterkeeper, and it's good not to be calling in, actually. Thank you. The Lake George Waterkeeper supports the determination by the Adirondack Park Agency that the encroachment into the shoreline setback is substantial and excessive. Additionally, we. Additionally, we feel there are alternatives available that would reduce the overall disturbance and the increased impervious surface within the shoreline setback and critical environmental areas surrounding Lake George. Furthermore, it appears the project creates redundant features such as a second main entrance, second garage, as well as the concrete steps off of the lakeside porch where development should be considered to be minimized. An undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood. The proposal will increase the existing nonconformity as well as increase the structure area within the shoreline setback, as been stated, and increase impervious cover around the residence. There's, there's actually going to be more driveway, albeit on one side. I don't know if a building's going to buffer that from the lake. And there are limited mitigation measures, all within the CA surrounding Lake George. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by another method other than an area variance. The applicant could reduce and relocate the proposed addition to the south, which would eliminate the apparent second entrance to the western side of the addition. It seems there's a mud entrance, and then there's that large grill entrance, which is just off the driveway, and appears is going to be a second entrance, where right now, there's actually only one entrance to the house on that side. The proposed detached garage could be eliminated, incorporated into the existing garage, which could be expanded, maybe have the entrance doors to the west. This would eliminate the probable blasting and concrete work for the detached garage that would reduce disruption to the natural site conditions, which the application material actually states is a concern of the project. It was also said that they couldn't put the garage on one level because it would increase the square footage. But I think you actually increase the square footage of disturbance more by putting in two driveways. So by having it on two levels, you actually, in my opinion, have more disturbance because now you have two driveways instead of one. The proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions. The proposed addition will result in increased impervious surfaces near the lake with limited mitigation measures. Additionally, the proposed detached garage will result in blasting and excavation disruption in the natural site conditions. It's more of a planning issue, but again, what, some considerations for what materials are going to be used, you know, in that garage with the items necessary for, for the hobby that would be used. A couple of comments on the, I, it was said that the practical difficulty was because of the lake. Now, that's the first time I've heard Lake George referred to as a practical difficulty. I think the difficulty's from the, the proposed addition. It can't be seen from the road, they showed all that, but obviously, it can be seen from the lake, and that's the main concern on shoreline setbacks. More than half of this addition will be within the shoreline setback, 52 percent. So to me, that appears to be substantial. That should be reduced. And those are my comments. So thank you very much.
Sure. Anybody else?
I'm Kathy Grassmider, and I am the homeowner. And I wanted to just make a couple of comments that Dan and I are lovers of the lake. We are very much interested in the preservation of Lake George, but we also really appreciate old architecture. I think some of the points made by Mr. Nowitzki are not, he, he might not be as familiar with the layout of the current house that we are, that there is some structures of the house that we would like to keep in place. You saw in the pictures that there is a very old stone porch, that it would be a shame to, to have to try to modify that for living space. So there's a bit of a pinch point in that living area in the front. There's also an incredibly beautiful old staircase that when, when people come in and see it, they say they just don't make things like this anymore. The center of the house has a, a fireplace in it, which is unique in that it has a fireplace opening into the dining room as well as the, the living room. And those structures, the porch, the fireplace, and the staircase, that is somewhat of a pinch point requiring the, the addition. So, so in bringing the house up to date from the 1920s to the 2020s, it, it's our opinion that the, the variance is not substantial. Also, I just want to point out that the new stormwater measures that we're proposing that currently don't exist with the plantings, et cetera, I feel that our team has done a great job from an architectural standpoint as well as from a stormwater standpoint to both protect the, the character of the building as well as protect the lake. Thanks very much for your time.
Anybody else? So I think our two minutes is exceeded here. So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, excuse me, we do have some letters.
There is, there are four letters in support of the project. Read the basic basis of one of the letters, and then read the names in that support. Because my property is located adjacent to Grassmider's on the east side of the property. I have reviewed the plans for the proposed renovation in addition to the home as well as for the second garage slash workshop. It is my understanding that multiple variances are being requested, and I wanted to provide this letter in support of the variances requested by Mr. and Mrs. Grassmider. And that's Diane Matthews, 18 Seaver Point. Very similar letter from Jeff and Deborah Myers, 16 Rocky Shore Road, Lake George. Another similar letter from Robert McCormick and Lynn McCormick, 18 Dark Bay Lane. And another letter in support from Lester Chase and Talia Chase, 3219 Seaver 9.
So, at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing and poll the board, and I'm just stuck with Brett.
Yeah, I, it's a, it's a long one. This is a lot of thought into this, a lot of, a lot of individuals, a lot of moving parts, if you will. I guess what I come back to is that the net of this to me is you're working with a 1920s home that is trying to be framed into a 2020 home, and there's some things that have to be worked around, and there's some considerations that have to be given to that. So I'm in favor of the project. The dormers, dormers aren't of concern, they bring in light, I don't have a big deal with that. So the project, again, is, is a, is an interesting one, has some complexities. I, I do follow both sides of the equation here, but I am going to land with what I believe will be a good project in totality once it's completed.
Ryan?
Yeah, I, I think the size of the property supports what they're doing. I think the improvements to the lakeside, I un, I understand and I hear Mr. Nowitzki, the waterkeeper, talking about the addition, and the size of the addition being within that, that 75 feet. I don't know how else you could have placed that to, to stay out of that 75-foot buffer, but again, I, the way the property is laid out, I, I, I am in favor of it. The, the second garage, where it is and what it's going to be used for, again, three acres supports that. Should, should that 1,248-square-foot garage, should that be 1,100 square feet? They could knock 100 square feet off of that real easy, but what's, what's the 100 square feet going to do? You know, if in fact, if in fact it hinges on that garage, you know. But as I said, I'm in favor of the project. I think the property can, can support it, and I think it'll be a good addition.
John?
Yeah, it's a, it's a large piece of property. It does support a second garage. The height on the house is questionable, but I understand what they're trying to do, keep the character of the old house. In the first, you know, I did pass this the first time that it came in front of us, but I also said that I thought maybe they could put a lift in the existing garage, which would, would eliminate the, the height variance on the second garage. I, I think it's, they deserve a second garage, detached garage, because of the property. So I'm going to change my vote now and say that I do not approve this as, as is for the second garage, the height, that bothers me. I think they can put the lift in the garage closest to the house and still get what they want, and otherwise, I approve this as is, except for that, the height of the second garage.
Right. Yeah, I'm going to agree with John almost entirely. I think, I know it's hard taking a 100-year-old home and trying to update it to today's standards, but we have a chance to, to create some, some relief in some areas where things are, especially in that second garage, which is new. I think we can reduce the height as well, and I, I would like, there's a shoreline setback to be greater, but I, I don't think that's going to be a possibility. So I'm going to say the size, size of the property supports most of the other changes, so it doesn't have to be mitigated, but I do think that the height of the second garage is a problem, and I would want that to be reduced.
Jim?
Yeah, I would agree. I think that the alterations to the main home seem reasonable to me. I think the, the, the one question would be the addition on the side, you know, whether, whether you should go south with it or not. You know, I think that still could be a consideration, but I've always been against the second garage from the beginning, and I think, you know, if the second garage were just going to be storage or for, you know, cars or boats, whatever it happened to be, but I think that, you know, the fact that it's going to be for restoration of vehicles, it's a residential area, even though it's a large, substantial residential area, at the same time, I don't think we would allow this on any other residential lot in town, you know, as proposed, and I think that's, that's still a sticking point for me. So as long as you have the second garage, I'm not going to be in favor of the overall project.
Kathy?
Well, last time, I also had the same reservations as Jim, we could add some to the garage, but I do believe we made a condition. I'm not so sure how that condition gets in the list, how, how, how much beyond the purview it is. It's not so much the size of the garage or anything, it's the use, as he says. It's, it's not technically commercial, but it's a commercial-like activity with all of the, the power coating and things. So I'm against that, the use of the garage in particular. The breezeway's great, have no problem with the height issues with the dormers or any of that, but it is a large lot, and I, they've been very creative. I think they just need to get a little more creative with the addition. There's a lot of room in that house, actually, and there's more storage being added, and I don't know, I think it's, just because it's a year-round, it doesn't necessarily need all this much space, so.
So what, so you're objecting to...
I'm objecting to the 75, the 75-foot. I'd like to see if we can't get it to 75 something, if it can be ground shifted, there could be some play here. I'm an architect, but I see a lot of room in places where things can be repositioned, and I'm opposed to the use of the garage.
Okay, so, I'm not doing real well here, so let me, let me say my piece, and then we'll give you a, an opportunity. First of all, the house is 75 feet now, so to get to 75 feet, you'd have to tear the house down. So we're not going to ask, in my opinion, we're not going to ask the applicant to tear the house down and build a new structure. I think it's admirable that they are attempting to rebuild a beautiful old building like this. So I certainly would support the shoreline setback. The height of the, of the main building, we said the dormers aren't any higher than what exists right now. So approving the construction of the dormers doesn't really violate height, it's just because the height's greater now than, it's a nonconforming structure. So then, it gets down to the second garage. It's not unusual for us to approve a second garage on a location where the lot size is four acres. We understand that that's a good-sized property and that it warrants a second garage. So, and I don't have a problem with the size of the second garage, 1,278 square feet versus 1,100 isn't a game changer. So it sounds like with several of the other board members, it's the height of the second garage that's the problem.
So we, we hear that, and we'll have to ask for it to be tabled and...
So, we're going to, you're going to request the tabling here? Till when?
Next month. We'll just look at the garage and see what we can do.
Okay, so the rest of the board, did I summarize the feelings?
I have a couple of comments as well.
Actually, I, I want it for the record, I'm...
Yeah, I understand you.
I don't, I don't want the house torn down. I'm not talking about setback for the existing house. This is new construction. It's addition to a nonconforming use, and therefore, I think somehow you can get that into more compliance.
Okay.
So, John? Can I just put something on the record? Just, just to note the differences between the garages. You may state that we could bring the lifts into the garage that we are attaching to the existing structure. However, there is not enough space in that garage. You know, there were points that you could expand that existing garage that's currently there and add additional bays. We would be adding more bays, which would trigger another variance, you know, by the town for the, per garage. So we can't have the lift down at that existing garage where there is not enough room to store all the parts and pieces and workshop to work on these cars. So lift is required in that detached garage if that is going to be a component of the master plan of the, the restoration of the vehicles.
How big's, is it 1,900, how big's the garage that's detached? Is it 1,900?
It don't have...
Or is it 13, what is it?
1,248.
1,248 is the new one.
It's the new one.
Right, but the, the one that's attached.
No, that's detached.
Right, but I'm talking about the attached, because he's talking about putting the lift into the attached.
No, that's what you, you guys mentioned, bringing in the lifts. We wouldn't need a height variance for the detached garage if we were to bring the car lifts down into the new proposed attached garage.
Right, and that's why I asked you, the first time, you said it couldn't be done, but you said, because you said there wasn't enough height there, but that's why, one of the questions I asked you way back in the beginning.
So there's one, not enough height in there, and two, the use and function. So if putting a lift in that garage wouldn't be acceptable because there's, the use needs to be in the detached garage, all the car storage, all the work on the cars. You could imagine the distance between the attached garage and detached garage on the site would outweigh carrying, you know, pieces in the workshop, working back and forth. So the, the height in that detached garage doesn't work for the function of restoring cars.
So, John, can I have a motion to table this application?
Bill, I'd like to make a motion to table area variance 29 dash 2021.
That's right. I just want to know if this information that's going to be updated can be provided to our office by next Thursday.
I don't know about that.
Let's commit to that, and if we have to ask any questions, we will.
Okay, I just, that's good.
All right, so, so it's first meeting, second meeting, June?
The first meeting in June.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to table area variance 29 dash 2021, Grassmiders, until June of 2021, and any information submitted by next week.
So that would be the 27.
So we have a motion? Can we have a second, please?
A second then, Mr. Chairman.
And just to confirm, this is, it's, it's the meeting of June 16.
16, right.
June 16th, okay.
Brett seconded it. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Hallen?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
John Niewo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
So here we go.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
See you next month. So our next application is AV 27, 2021.
The applicant proposes to complete work on an existing 1.5-story cabin. The existing footprint is 1,365 square feet. Cabin floor is 1,793 square feet. The site is an existing house on the property with a footprint of 1,496 square feet. Total site core area is 4,641 square feet, and proposed is 4,985 square feet. The applicant had started work in 2019 and was issued a stop-work order. A portion of the existing home was damaged by a tree and is now being reconstructed. The existing deck has been removed, and a newer deck is to be constructed. The interior, main floor, and basement area are to be renovated. This includes the foundation and wall supports. Interior improvements include a new entry-roof feature, doors, and sliders on the lower level. Site plan for the new floor area and CEH, an expansion of the non-conforming structure. We leave the quest of setbacks and expansion of a non-conforming structure. That's per 179-3-040, dimensional requirements. The new construction on the north side is to be 22.8 feet, where 25 feet is required. And then looking at the criteria, the project may be considered to have little to no impact on neighboring properties. The feasible alternatives may be limited due to the location of the existing home and repair of damaged product. Relief may be considered minimal, relevant to the code. Side setback relief is 2.2 feet. Project as proposed may be considered to have minimal impact on the environmental conditions of the site or area. And the project as proposed may be considered self-created. Staff comments. The applicant proposes to maintain the already constructed repair addition to an existing home. The addition was constructed as a portion of the home was damaged. The project also includes interior alterations that have been started for the basement area, main floor, the entry deck, weight, and interior portion of the home. The applicant intends to install a new septic system as part of the upgrade to the home, and the parcel has an existing 1.5-story wood frame home on the property that will remain as is with no changes. And then, this is, Queensberry, look better.
Good evening, Board. I'm Tom Hutchins, here on behalf of Stephen Burnett and the Burnett Family Trust. This is, this is another property we're structured that date back to the 1920s. It's been in their family since that time, since the early 1900s, and it's passed down from a number of generations. You may recall, if you've been on this board a while, that about 2015, two brothers had basically exclusive loot, exclusive use of the two residences. One brother used one, and one brother used the other one. And at that time, they applied to subdivide the properties, because the brothers had different visions of what they wanted to do in the future. That application was denied. Subsequently, one brother, Stephen, has taken ownership of the property, and it's in his trusty, so it's all back in one family, and he's trying to clean up the issues with the cabin. Subsequently, 2018 or so, it was damaged by a tree. They started some work repairing this cabin, and the work snowballed, and it became a little more than just repairing a little roof damage from a tree falling on it. And he's under stop-work order now. He wants to make it right and move on and repair this cabin. The cabin is being replaced on the original footprint. We're not expanding, however, part of that, the little wing off the north side is 22.8 feet from that northern property line, where that side setback is 25 feet. That little wing is there because it contains stairs, and putting stairs anywhere else in that structure would mess up the layout of the thing totally. Just, that's where the stairs have always been. Historically, that may have been added on years ago when they put stairs there, but it's part of the history of the structure. He's trying to rebuild on footprint. We reduce some asphalt. We reduce the size of the deck. We are doing a new compliant septic system, and we're here simply asking for 2.3 feet of side setback, really. Everything else is compliant. It's over 100, 150 feet from the lake. Well buffered, so we'd like your support for what we feel is a relatively simple hesitation.
So do we have questions of the applicant? Seeing no questions, a public hearing has been advertised, so at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing, see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to input on this particular project, and invite anybody watching on the outside, if they have comment, to give us a call at 518-761-8225. Do you have any written?
No, but there, I should have read this in earlier. The planning board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impacts. It cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal, and this motion was passed on May 18, 2021, by a 1-2-3-4-6-0 vote.
So Maria, you're normally the timekeeper here. You got to let me know when two minutes are up. Unless, Tom, you have any entertaining stories that you can?
That was my story. I was trying to keep it really short tonight.
It's 2.2 of relief, not 2.3, right?
Yeah, did I say 2.3?
I thought you did, yeah.
I often wondered what happened with this project.
What's a Supreme Court?
Came back how many times?
You were the one that.
I said, no, I don't.
Knocked it out.
No, I mean, they went to, they went to the county, right, to a judge for adjudication on this, right? And the judge threw it back and said that it was the zoning board, because they wanted to subdivide it.
They wanted to subdivide it. The subdivision required a number of variants.
But after they got turned down, that's it. Then the one brother said he would buy it, the cabin from the other.
They worked it out. They're a little more towards the nap.
Yeah, I mean, the second person passed away, as I remember.
There was a death.
And it was in the will, and everybody wanted their money, you know? Hello?
Okay.
That's good recall, Ron.
I've only been involved for two months, but that's. No, I mean, the thing that I found really sad for the person that was in, you know, that house, he retired there, right? And it was all under one deed, and it was being taxed, and then the brother passed, and nobody was kicking in expenses on the taxes and everything.
The property went all the way back to the Civil War.
There you go.
Two brothers there, Civil War.
It's a long time.
So that's good, Ron. You might have forced the issue on us. Yeah, the real problem was two houses on one property.
And now you have, one person has the whole thing. He probably had to take a mortgage on his house and sell his car.
Yeah, but now we're still having to deal with a property with two houses on. I feel sorry. You didn't do a complete job.
I'm not going to go that far with this.
Maria, is that two minutes up yet? Okay, so at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to pull the board, and I'm going to start with Roy.
Yeah, I, this is a minimal request. I need your favor.
John?
Yeah, I think it's a small request. Also, even though there's two houses on one piece of property, they're pre-existing early anyways, and it's 1.2 acres. I'm all for it.
Ron?
Yes, I'm in favor. Present it.
Brett?
I'm in favor.
Kathy?
I'll approve.
And I too support the project, so, Jim, I'm going, oh. You're irrelevant. So you can do the motion.
And you can do the motion, I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve area variance 27-2021 at 11 Andrew Drive. Again, the applicant's name is Stephen Burnett, trustee of the Burnett Family Trust. The applicant requests relief for setbacks and expansion of a non-conforming structure in the waterfront residential zone. Having listened to the application materials and information supplied, the board finds that there is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment of properties, because the requested variance for 2.2 feet of relief from the 25-foot side setback is deemed to be minimal. Feasible alternatives have been considered by the board. There really are none, because the structure exists, has existed for quite some time now. Families, it's been in the same families' use since the Civil War. As far as the requested variance being substantial, we deem it to be not substantial, because it's only 2.2 feet from 25 feet. There's, as far as adverse impacts on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood, we do not know any at all from this project. The alleged difficulty is self-created because of the placement of the building and as it currently exists, and it's a staircase in violation. As far as in addition to what the board finds to benefit to the applicant from granting the requested variance outweighs any detriment to the health, public safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community. Board also finds the variance requested the minimum necessary. Based on these findings, I make a motion to approve area variance 27-2021.
So we have a motion? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Ron, call the vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
John Niewo?
Yep.
Henry David?
Yes.
Sanriko?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Hamon?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Board.
Congratulations. Okay, our next application is AV 2021, 333 Cleverdale, LC.
The applicant requests approval of an outdoor seating area, which includes four six-person picnic tables and one four-person table on the restaurant parcel, and five top tables for four persons each on the adjoining parcel. Site plan for modification of the approved plan and modification of the special use permit. The relief requested is for permeability in parking, and that's per section 179-3-040, dimensional. Variance for the property of 333 Cleverdale is for parking, where 44 spaces are required and 17 spaces are provided. Permeability is 22.7% and 75% is required. Minor impacts to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be considered to reduce the number of seats. The relief requested may be considered moderate to substantial, relevant to the code. The relief requested for parking is 27 spaces less than required. The relief, the permeability is 52.3% less than required permeability. The project may be considered to have minimal impact on the physical or on the environmental conditions of the area, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments. The applicant proposes to add outdoor seating from the existing restaurant. The project includes additional outdoor seating on adjoining parcels. The plan shows the location of the outdoor seating and the location of the existing building. During COVID, the applicant had outdoor seating and would not like, would now like to make it permanent.
For the record, John Lapper with Tom Center, the project engineer. I don't know if it's the board's pleasure to do this with 337 together.
I thought about it. We really should do them separately.
Okay. You may want to at least read in the description, and the only reason why I suggest that is due to the public hearings, due to the public hearings that are coming up for both of them.
Okay, okay, so people would get confused which one that they're calling.
I think that's the case.
Yeah, okay.
So, am I reading you? Okay, so this is 32, 2021. The applicant proposes to utilize a portion of the 0.15-acre parcel for additional outdoor seating for the adjoining Sans Souci restaurant, which includes five tables for four people at each table. The location is an existing hard surface area of about 407.2 square feet of pavers used as a waiting area for customers. Variances are required for the proposed use and some previous activities that have not received approvals. The site is an existing detached garage and the deck that require review. Site plan and special use permit are required to add a restaurant use to an existing parcel with a home on it. The relief requested is for floor area, restaurant use, permeability, and parking. And that's, this is, the applicant requests relief for these setbacks permeability in restaurant use for section 179-3-040, dimensional. Variance for the property of 337 Cleverdale, floor area existing is 1,397 square feet, and the maximum allowed is 1,607 square feet permeability. 51.5% is existing, where 75% is required. Deck front setback is 18.4 feet, rear setback is 28.4 feet, where 30 feet is required. Garage rear setback is 3.1 feet, rear setback is 17.1 feet, where 30 feet is required. Restaurant use per special permit, five acres required, and 0.15 acres is existing. Minor impacts in the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be considered limited due to the location of the existing house and the proximity to the restaurant. The relief requested may be considered relevant, considered substantial, relevant to the code. Relief requested for floor area is 210 square feet in excess. Permeability is 23.7%. Deck front setback is 11.6 feet, rear setback is 1.6 feet, garage rear setback was 26.9 feet, south 12.9 feet, restaurant use 6.85 acres. The project may be considered to have minimal impact, and the difficulty may be considered self-created.
So, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Staff comments. The applicant proposes, on the residential side, to allow five tabletops for four persons each, and to request approval of each existing conditions of the deck and garage. The outdoor seating is associated with the restaurant, existing restaurant on the adjoining parcel, as outdoor seating is proposed on that parcel as well. The outdoor seating was offered during COVID, and the applicant would like the use to be allowed.
So we got to have two separate determinations here, because we have two separate properties.
Absolutely, but it's easier to talk about them together.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I see.
Where the line is. So, just to begin with, so, so the sands, as it's referred to, Sans Souci is without worry, in French, so this is, you know, since 1913, is my understanding, this has been there, a very unique and important destination on the southern basin of Queensbury. It's been multiple ownership, you know, mostly everybody losing money, and then the next guy taking over. So in 2018, eight families, because the current, the then current owner, Larry Klute, was getting tired of financing losses or just breaking even, and everyone who was a patron wanted to make sure that it remained as a resource for the community, as a gathering spot for the community. So a bunch of people decided to pool their resources and buy it. Since then, they've done some nice cleanup on the inside, you know, mostly cosmetic lighting fixtures, carpet, paint, hired a new chef. But it's the same use that's been there for all of these decades, and it allows people to walk or to drive from Cleverdale Assembly Point, Pilot Knob, just all the areas in southern basin of Lake George, rather than having to drive into Queensbury proper or into Lake George Village. So just served an important purpose. People have stories for decades of, you know, kids who then grew up in warehouses nearby, and everyone gathers there. So, you know, for that reason, it operates very different than any other restaurant in town, or mostly anywhere else. When you look at the parking, the people park too deep. Everybody knows everybody, and if there's an issue, you'll hear someone say, okay, white Toyota SUV, you got to move, because somebody's leaving. And that's, you know, nowhere else would anybody put up with that, but here, that's absolutely how it works and how it always looks. You know, if you're familiar with the site, there's a lower parking lot on Cleverdale Road and a higher parking lot on Mason Road. The area, because of COVID, where the tables have been placed, is basically inside, you can see from the map, the inside of the parking. So you've got the two streets, and you've got the parking areas along the streets, and this is the area that's basically buffered by the cars, buffered by the roads. But that said, you know, when we were all concerned of last March and April and not knowing how contagious everything was, sitting outside is pretty important, and it's been, you know, and it's been helpful making people feel comfortable, and also it's nice to sit outside. So it's the same use that's happened there for, you know, over 100 years, but it would. be nice to have seats outside. The garage that was discussed isn't a garage, it's a little, it's a storage area. It's considered a garage in Queensberry because the door is six feet wide, and that's just where they keep equipment for the restaurant, decorations, et cetera. But this is a request that is supported by many, many people. We've got letters from dozens and dozens of neighbors, people that walk to the restaurant, people that drive to the restaurant, because it's really important to them, it's a lifestyle thing. You know, I know that there are some neighbors here, and, you know, they wish this was a house instead of a restaurant, but this has been here a long time before anybody else. And we're, this is like the year after the Titanic, so this has been there a long time. So I'm going to ask Tom to go through the variances, just to summarize and explain why we chose what we chose and what needs to happen on the lot next door. We're not asking for the A-frame to become a restaurant, it's just that it needs a special use permit so that the outdoor seating can go over the line into that, into that property. Do you want me to address the variances on both parcels or just the tavern parcel?
First, you got to tell us who you are.
Tom Center with Hutchins Engineering.
Okay, nice.
Do you want me to address the variance on both parcels or just the one?
Yes.
Okay. For the, for the restaurant parcel, the only variance that we're looking for is for the parking, for less than the required parking. John, I think, explained, you know, how the parking works.
Well, also permeability.
There, there is no additional permeable hard surface for this, for this parcel. I'm not sure why that's in there anymore. We didn't, the, the, we had, there's no additional hard surface, there's no new construction, there's nothing. Everything that there has been there, that portion of that patio was actually in the previous submission when we did the other work, when they did their expansion. So there is no additional hard surface. That, that patio, the garage and the deck, actually, if you look at GIS, were added sometime between 2008 and 2010. So the only, the only thing we're looking for on the tavern parcel is parking.
Okay, so.
That's fine.
Through staff?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, so that would be just the parking. In regards to the residential parcel, like we said, the garage and the deck were added sometime around, it looks like in 2008 on the GIS, you can see it pretty clearly. And those are for the setbacks for those, and they were done by a previous owner. And the patio also was sometime between that 2008, 2012 timeframe. So we're looking for the, that would be the permeable relief there and for the setbacks for the deck and the garage. And also, the last one will be to use the parcel for the restaurant, special use permit. Like again, again, they're only looking to add these things to already existing surfaces that were there. Are there any questions in regards to those variances or anything you'd like me to address further or anything about the two parcels?
Do we have questions?
About, in general?
Yeah, sure.
So the house itself, is it occupied?
Yes, it is, it is owned by the same owners, and it is rented out.
It's rented out?
Yep.
Okay. I just see a lot of your non-compliance could get a little filter if those, if it was feasible to merge those lots, does that make sense?
I, I don't think merging them, as they say.
You have two different uses on one lot, I understand that.
And it's really, this wouldn't have come up had you not had COVID and they allowed outside usage and the way that it was accepted. So that's really why this has come forward. It's not like, you know, I know previously there was, there was a patio built on the other side that's been removed, that, that was, that they did ask for, that was not, that was not approved, but it has been removed by this owners. The entrance out that side was removed, and it was brought back into green space area over there.
So the people living in that house don't mind having patrons all over?
I believe they're related to the owners.
Right, all right.
Other questions?
I mean, I don't know if this, change this or not, but is there any discussion about hours that people could be outside? I mean, if, you know, if this is approved, it means there could be any.
That's something we can certainly talk about as we get into this.
Sure.
For the outside.
These, these tables are not taking up any parking spaces.
No, that's correct. No, we're not losing, we're not losing any parking, parking remains the same.
No, John can sit down, or you want John, hey, you need John there.
Just if he gets stumped. And also, I guess, I was talking with somebody else who goes up there, some folks from North Queensberry, that said that also a lot of people use golf carts up there and bring golf carts in to get there. So they're, you know, you've got some parking in a smaller vehicle.
But this is really a result of, of the coronavirus, where everybody had to sit outside.
Correct. They didn't, they didn't just start this and then come back, come to for approval. This is because how it was accepted, you know, during COVID and the outside seating, and knowing in the future people are going to want to, though some people are going to want to sit outside or have more space.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Other questions? So, public hearing has been advertised, and so I'm going to, for the purposes of the public hearing, I'm going to consider both of these requests together. And then, after we've accepted input from the public, then we'll separate. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this? So he was, he was quicker than you, man. Plus, I couldn't see you, you're blocked by the podium.
Can I go, can you show me the first slide on this and give me the top, because that's my property, Nick Gisette's 97 Mason Road. I own the property for almost 19 years. And again, I acknowledge and accept San Souci is his. I was born and raised in Glens Falls. My family's own property up on the east side, on and off for a long time. I don't know if you can show me all the way to the top.
Did you, did you state your name?
Yes, Nick Gisette.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So my property is on the other side of the wood frame house, right across Mason Road. So that corner, I'm right there. So I, I know all about the Sands. And I'm going to tell you about the house. The gentleman said it's, it's rented to relatives. I don't think so. That's, it's like an Airbnb, okay? People come and go during the summer. So it's, it's a little different spin here, all right? So what they're asking for is a 50% increase in occupancy. Their occupancy right now, stated inside, is 105. 48 is almost 50% of 105. So you're, you're asking for a big increase without one single car parking space being added, okay? Now, I, at the top here, and my property's two-tiered, so I have, in the old days, there used to be a tennis court there, okay? And it's now my leash fields. Those guys, when it's crowded on a weekend, they park there. They park in my driveway, they throw bottles, they throw trash, they are rude, okay? They come flying around the corner, and I have seven grandchildren, okay? And they, rude behavior, they swear at us, they come flying around and act like we're, we're the problem, all right? It's inappropriate. And again, loud voices late at night, we have a garbage smell sometimes, compressor sigh, sounds. Again, I just don't think it's the right thing. I'm okay with it as is, it's been there. Her, her uncle, who would be 96 this year, had his first drink there when he was 14. So again, we know all about the history going back to, you know, 1913.
Was it called Staples before?
Yes.
It was a dance hall.
Yeah. And then they had, you know, Walter had it, and it's, you know, again, we know the history. But as is, okay. 50% increase and parking on, on a July 4th weekend, we want, they'll take over our yards. Just tell me. Okay.
So the other lady was, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder about the timing of public comment. Typically, we, you have offered only three minutes, so just to be able to.
Yeah, so, yeah, try to keep your comments to three minutes. You know, if everybody's saying the same thing, we've, we've already heard, you know, this once, so, you know, try to talk about other things.
Okay. I'm Melanie O'Brien. I'm also part of that family that owns 97 Mason Road. That was my husband's that just spoke. And I just, I've been.
Can I, can I hold it just a second? Hello, this is Queensberry ZBA.
Did you want a pizza?
Better to get it.
Get a coffee, too.
After the people who were in the general audience talk.
Melanie, what, what did you say your address was?
97 Mason Road, the owners of 97 Mason Road.
Go ahead. Sorry about that.
That's all right. So I've reviewed some of the files, the prior applications and so forth, special use permits, and, and there's been a lot of, a lot of variances for various things. Changing the restaurant, putting in some holding tanks, some understandably, all these things sidelined setback, there's been a lot to give with this non-conforming use to bring it up, you know, to make it better, to make it serve the population, so forth. And, and so, okay. But at some point, some of these rules and these variances, you have to consider the surrounding community as well and the neighbors as well. And with all due respect, some of the people that speak are not neighbors contiguous to this property and abiding it, and they don't maybe share the same concerns. They go there and have a good meal and they go home, and we, and we go next door. So again, the applicant does seek an increase of 48 permanent outdoor seats, and this is in addition to the indoor seating capacity of 105 totaling 153, which they may not all use, but legally, once it's granted, they have the right to use either this owner or a future owner. And the capacity is especially intense during the summer months, and that's when your outdoor capacity is going to be, I would think, maximized. People are going to be wanting to be outside in May and September, and they will be. Also, currently, the patio area is used as a waiting area for people waiting for tables inside the restaurant. They will not have that space if that's now being committed to people sitting and eating there. So I don't know what you're going to do with those people and where they will be if you're taking away their patio area where they have sort of a holding area for them. So we, we really consider that variance is very substantial to add 53 permanent seats, and also the fact that you're now kind of also sort of growing this use beyond the commercial into now a residential space as well. Secondly, the applicant acknowledges 44 parking spaces would be required for this increased capacity, but is seeking a variance to use its existing 17 parking spaces, notwithstanding the increased capacity. And when you discount the spaces reserved for handicapped use and for two that are allotted to their employees, you're under that 17. So this variance is really substantial, adding this kind of capacity and not making parking arrangements. It, it, and I know we keep saying, oh, they had this special system going on and they park in tandem, but if you Google restaurants on Cleverdale and it comes up San Souci, there's nothing telling you there are special parking arrangements. You're from out of state or out of the area. You just park on the road, you just park on my property, you park on, on Janet's property. So it is, it is a concern, and I know the applicant discounts it, but it is a concern. Thirdly, quality of life for surrounding.
Yeah, I'm running out of time here.
And that are my three minutes?
I think you.
Did you take away my three minutes with that phone call?
Oh, that's right. You're right.
Give me 30 for a second.
I gave you another minute. Go ahead.
Can I just finish up?
Sure.
Quality of life for the surrounding properties. So parking is a problem, but that's not the only problem. The application doesn't address noise and the hours the gentleman brought up. So bars, my understanding, bars can be open well past midnight, so that will create some noise that does not exist because there's now, not now, 48 people out there having.
I, I think in Warren County, they can't be open past midnight.
Well, okay, well, if you say so, but I don't know what the regulations are for that. For bars.
But I remember a meeting about that.
Is it in their special use permit that they cannot be open past a certain time?
I, I don't think it makes any difference. I think in Warren County, the bars have to shut down at midnight.
Okay, I heard much later time, but I hope you're right. So it is a bar and not, as well as a restaurant. So we just feel that this is a material change to the area. Noise hasn't been addressed, lighting, litter control haven't been addressed by the applicant. So we think this, these are quality of life issues that we need to be addressing. So I am not in support of the variances requested by the owner that would expand the seating capacity by 50%, but not include a plan for parking, for adequate parking, and noise and related impacts to neighboring properties. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, there are people outside waiting to come in to speak, so if you have spoken and if you could give up your seat, I would appreciate that so people can come in from the outside to speak.
So the lady in the back, you're next.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Caitlin Miller, and I am co-owner with my family members of the residential property at 93 Mason Road. So if you look up at the map here, I am that corner lot, as well as the lot across the street to the west. I'm speaking to you tonight to express our extreme opposition to everything addressed in this application. Our property shares those three borders with the San Souci property, and our family has owned the property since the 1970s. My grandfather owned the property until he passed away a few years ago. My mother was raised on the property, as were my brother and I. It is our understanding that the San Souci has, has in the past been granted a special use permit to operate commercial business in a residential zone. The current application requests modifications to that special use permit in order to utilize the property in a much more intensive way. It's because of our love for our community and our experiences with the property that we feel it's appropriate that we strongly oppose all of the parts of this application. Our oppositions are as follows. The outdoor seating, as mentioned by some of my neighbors, is being requested to increase the capacity of the restaurant by 50%. In past years, the area where the tables were during COVID-19 was used as a waiting area. The applicant has stated that this area was installed by a previous owner. It's important to note it was used by the previous owner on the residential property to have seating and tables well before COVID-19. We understood that due to COVID-19, we were all impacted, so we did not complain about additional noise and things that were caused by the seating in that area. However, as we can note, none of us are wearing masks tonight. The pandemic is hopefully coming to an end, so we don't see that this is necessary, that it becomes permanent. On many occasions, wait times for seating have caused patrons to congregate in the parking lot in adjacent streets for long periods of time. One occasion even resulted in a frisbee game that stopped traffic on Mason Road. On 11 separate occasions this past year, patrons of the Sands were found trespassing on our property and Janet Stasiyo's property. On one of these occasions, the most appalling of which, the patrons were on Miss Stasiyo's deck taking pictures of the sunset and were asked several times to leave. This is something that we've dealt with in the past, but not as frequently, and we've definitely noticed an uptick with the outdoor seating during 2020. We have issues with noise pollution. This application seeks to modify an existing special use permit, allowing additional commercial use. During the 2020 pandemic, we got to see a preview of what life would be like if the outdoor seating continued at the San Souci. We noticed a substantial increase in noise and disturbance to our otherwise quiet neighborhood. This can be directly attributed to the addition of the outdoor seating area. The noise often carried late into the evening and caused us to close windows of our home without air conditioning on hot summer nights, and we're going to try to mitigate that. The noise generated by constant shuffling and reparking of cars in the lot is substantial as well. The system that they use, the applicant has stated, is a well-versed system. They've used it for many years. While this may be true, it causes a lot of problems with the neighbors. We often kick people off our property. Often, people are honking horns or yelling in the parking lot while moving cars.
So, so noise is a problem. So we got to kind of speed things along here.
In addition to that, we have a hard time believing that the septic system is going to support an additional 50%.
That's not, that's not our purview.
Okay. We also have an issue with the fact that the special use conditions of the previous special use permits are not currently being met and have never been met.
So the special use permit isn't, again, part of our purview here.
On a more personal note, my family and I question why the Sands is seeking to expand the outdoor seating when historically there has been none. In fact, the only reason the outdoor seating was allowed for this was because of COVID-19. We understand that the pandemic was a hardship and therefore didn't complain, but that's no longer the case. Our property was purchased with the understanding that the restaurant would be for indoor dining only and not outdoor dining. Our property is the most affected since we share our full eastern property line with the Sands, as well as our southern, eastern borders of our back lot. In addition to this, would you like me to address the other application as well for the residential?
Yes.
Okay. So obviously, we are opposed to this as well for several other reasons. So this, if approved, which the applicant has glazed over, this would change the zoning of a lot, that is a residential lot, to a commercial zone. of a lot that is a residential lot to a commercial zoned area permanently. As adjacent neighbors were opposed to this application because.
Excuse me, but that doesn't change zoning. You just get variance. So the zoning is the zoning, no matter what.
We believe it would change the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And would open up the door for that area to be used in the future if they wanted to have live band nights, if they wanted to have weddings. It would open up the door for them or for future owners to use that space as they see fit as commercial property. We don't think that there is any rationale to prove hardship, and there's no benefit to the community other than what the Sands already has. The expansion of the restaurant into outdoor seating would further exacerbate the issues that we're already experiencing as neighbors. And it sets a dangerous precedent. So if this proposed zone change goes through, many of the properties passed down from generation to generation would be in danger of also being changed over to commercial property.
So again, we're not changing the zoning.
It's because of our love for our community and the experiences of the property that we feel it's appropriate that we strongly oppose all of the parts of this proposal. We hope that you take our coming here tonight's heart and that you understand that we are not asking for any changes made to the restaurant as is. We've lived in peace for many years with them, but we don't feel it's appropriate to expand to outdoor dining because of our needs.
You gave her four and a half minutes. You know, why do you have a gatekeeper?
That's okay.
If you don't close the gate.
We're, she's a resident. We're going to give her status.
Hi, my name is Bill Kimmons. I own the house at 87 Mason Road. I'm catty-cornered from the restaurant itself. First, I'm in a hurry here because I'm under a time constraint. But we moved, my wife and I moved 2012. We knew the restaurant was there. Everything's fine. We've helped them. We've helped the other owner. People would come by, they were very confused. When are they open? Were they not? We would try to sell the thing. We're all for the Sands, as it was before. All right. Now let me just go back to last night. Last night, we had a meeting. We weren't allowed to speak. It was a different kind of meeting for the planning board. Sorry, I'm rushing.
Just relax.
The, um, last night, somebody from the planning board said, asked a question about, this one about cold weather, very sentimental. He said, the Sands, we love the Sands, everyone, everyone likes the Sands. We've always been there 10 years. We love the Sands. However, now the new owners want to change the game. They want to change the special use. They want to use pieces. And some things were said that aren't exactly so. And about COVID was brought up last night, that, well, no one complained last year, plus because we were trying to be good Americans and go with the flow, okay, of the whole thing, as we all, I think, would hope to think we did. And also, let's remember, COVID, weren't people sitting there? They were meal pickup out, and then it was limited outdoor dining. It was a very different time. We all struggled through it. The parking, the parking's the big thing. And I want to go to the board to, you see, there is a, right, currently, right now, there's supposed to be a dumpster corral. They were ordered to do it, never existed, doesn't exist to this day. The three dumpsters, two dumpsters and a, and a one for grease and oil. And it shows that hatched area there as being grass area. Well, that's currently where parking is now. So we said, well, does any of this affect parking? Well, it does because the three dumpsters are there and the grease container. And then the picnic tables that you see up there, oh, guess what? They're in the parking area too. So, so the 44 parking spots that now we're, we're allowing everyone to work under 17, okay, then now we're going to have how many more cars with the 48 people? I don't know, pick a number. Let's say it's 10 more cars. Six, whatever, I don't know. We don't have enough parking now because, so where do they park? I have parking across the street from me for about five cars. I'm a good guy. I let people park there. I, I don't, it's not a big thing to me. I've had people, not, not a problem. But they park in my driveway now. I have a picture of a really nice Mercedes in my driveway. I wish I owned it. All right, I'm in a hurry with the time, so I'm going to go to the comprehensive plan. Queensbury has a comprehensive plan. This, in the application, it talks about being mixed use. We're not mixed use. We are rural residential. The nearest mixed use is at Beans Country Store. We're not even close. We're 10 minutes away from that. This is rural residential. It's a character.
It's actually water residential.
Well, if you look, if, when you look at the comprehensive plan, they refer to it, and I have the maps, as rural residential.
Hold on a second. So Laura, is this rural, rural residential or is this?
The classification is called waterfront residential, which allows not only residential uses, but other uses through special use permit, such as this restaurant use. So the restaurant use isn't allowed to use. I understand that the comp plan talks in generalities, so that's maybe why it talks about the world rural residential use in that particular area. Or they could be specifying what the APA land use classification is. So it does talk in generalities, but the zoning code specifically has that area as waterfront residential.
And in the, in the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2007, it also talks about targeted areas. And ours isn't one, it's not even near. I think that is a, it comes into this, it says that we're in harmony, it says that we're in harmony with the comprehensive plan, but it's not. We're a little teeny, you probably all know, it's a little place. Adding all of these people is going to, could potentially be a problem because we have to not only look at the current owners, we have to look what it could be for the next owners. And using that portion, like I said, those picnic tables, they're in a parking lot. The dumpster area, the grass, there's no room for grass. That's, that's just make believe. The parking is huge. The people park wherever. The roads are too small. What if, what if Mr. Getz, Getzettis' property catches on fire? The fire truck has to get by. Hence, I hope he has a good day where everyone's parking somewhere else because it's going to be hell to pay. And how about the poor people that are beyond the restaurant and the point? Now they have to deal with traffic congestion to just get, get to where they want to go? This is really unfair. We knew we moved next to the restaurant, inside restaurant. Becky was there, we helped her, the whole thing. But this is, this is beyond the pale now that they are encroaching. And this is only the first step in a plan, obviously, that they want to do more with the cottage. My wife and I are completely against it. And at last, in closing, they talk, well, it's a, it's a neighborhood thing. It's a neighborhood thing. Here's the Chronicle. Here's a, here's an advertisement for the Sands.
We don't need, yeah, we don't need that. We understand.
No, but they're reaching out. I heard tonight that, oh, well, people could walk from Assembly Point. Really? You're going to go for a beer and walk from Assembly Point? And you're going to go nine hour? You're going to take your life in your hand?
Jim, Jim uses a kayak.
Well, that's great, and he can, you can come to my dock.
I've walked from Harris Bay.
But you know what I'm saying? It's a, that's a reach to think maybe there are outliers that could do that, but are many people going to do that? I highly doubt it. So what are they doing? They're coming by car. They're coming by car, whether they're single, doubles, carpooling, lot of cars. I know some of those cars end up in our, in my driveway, in my, and I've been a good guy up to now. Those five spots, I've let people and said, at one time, guy gave me a really tough time. I said, could you move? And then, hey, and I said, you're close to my son's car. I said, what businesses of yours? And I said, why own the damn property? I just don't want you to scratch my son's car. He's very into his car. You know, this is the kind of day-to-day nonsense. I'm, and one of my, I'm the guy that goes and swims. I love snorkeling. I clean the stuff up from the lake. If I can't carry it with my bags, I'll put it on the, I'll put it on the dock to, to, you know, so I try to help the lake. My, my, and I have only been here for 10 years, but we're, we're very into the lake. This is, we're talking about adding 48 people to 105. You're adding, I like to look at it as a third big difference. I would kindly ask you to look at this as a quality of life. We haven't really talked about noise and light and all the other things. I'm done. Thank you.
Sure. Go ahead. So I hope you have something different than what we've already heard.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
I'm James Miller. I am the husband of Deborah Miller and Caitlin Miller, who spoke earlier. I won't re, uh, retalk about the things that have already happened. The problem here is that these two applications are being joined together and.
Well, that, just for discussion's sake, we're going to vote on them.
So the general theme is that they're asking for 48 more seats over two properties. The two properties need to be looked at separately. The existing San Souci property is a modification to an existing special use permit. I mean, that, that's what it is. And the point to be made is that based on all the information that's been given already, the previous special use permit's not working on issues of parking, on noise, on light pollution, right across the board. They're looking to increase or the intensity of that use. What they're asking for doesn't even come close to meeting the requirements that are in zoning ordinance for that property. Okay? We can go point by point, but I think other people have done that. So switching to the residential property, this is the introduction of a new special use permit. Okay, it's, that's the way it's stated in the application. So what they're saying is they want to put commercial in the existing waterfront residential use. This entails a change of the zoning ordinance. Okay? I'm an architect, I'm a city planner. In your ordinance, it goes in a very specific manner explaining how one can apply for and obtain a special use permit. I do not see this application addressing any of those items.
Because that's not our purview. We have nothing to do with special use.
Well, yeah, but if, if you're looking at that.
What we're, what we're going to pass judgment on here with the first property is whether they can, they're supposed to have 44 parking spots, whether 17 is adequate.
That's it.
That's what we're going to do for the first one. For the second one, there are a number of, um, um, variances listed. Okay, much more complex. Most of them are, um, side, you know, setback uses. So there's nothing to do with zoning here. There's nothing to do with special use. It's strictly area variance. That's what they're requesting.
Sir, respectfully, I would say that when you're reviewing the property that is existing residential, you have to look at that in terms of how a commercial use meets the requirements of that land use. And explicitly.
That's what, that's what the special use does. That special use allows them to have a restaurant in a waterfront residential area.
I know, but if you're here to grant a variance, what are you giving a variance to? You have to look at that as a waterfront residential piece of property, which says that you cannot put a food service use in that zone.
It's a, that's a density issue. The special, sir, so, so special use permit for this particular, for the town of Queensbury is handled by the planning board? So the, so in this sense.
It's not our purview.
Right.
It's not under our umbrella. If it were, we'd talk about it. It's not under our umbrella. It's, it's a planning board issue.
Yeah, I, I understand, but, you know, so I was at the planning board meeting last night, and they referred it to you folks, and then you're going to refer it back to them.
That's right. So what we have to do is we have to pass judgment on the variances, and then it goes to them. And they're the ones who are in charge of special use. They're the ones who are in charge of noise. They're the ones who are in charge of lighting. And so all of that is handled by the planning board. So what you went to was a, a public meeting, not a public hearing. So tonight is a public hearing, and that allows you to speak, and that's what you're doing.
Yes.
And you guys have taken a lot longer than what would be normal. We're going to be here till midnight tonight. Of course, there's a bunch of other cases here besides this.
Right, but this is very important.
Sure, and I understand that. That's why I'm giving you some leeway here, but, you know, I've got to kind of keep things contained too.
So, so let me, let me wrap up what I have to say. For the San Souci property, there's current problems. They're not being met. They're looking to intensify that use, create more problems. For the waterfront residential property, I, I believe that you have to review that as a waterfront residential property. Any changes to introduce commercial use to that property have to be done by a special, a new special use permit. Thank you.
Sure.
I'd just like to read my letter that I sent to both boards.
Well, if, so.
But I'd like it on the record.
Do we have a, yeah, so Roy, what's your name? Do we have a letter from?
We have a total of 38 letters sent in.
Yeah. I'm Janet, I'm Janet Stasio.
Okay, all right. So you're going to read your letter rather than Roy.
Janet Stasio. As a neighboring resident at 95 Mason Road, Cleverdale, the San Souci has an address of 92 Mason Road on some internet advertisements. I'm writing to object strongly to the project descriptions and the proposals, special permits and variances, if they're granted. I believe they will negatively affect the environment and character of the local community. For decades, the San Souci was a tavern for indoor eating and drinking and should remain that way. It should not be allowed to change the atmosphere of the neighborhood with permanent outside seating, increase in parking spots, and other modifications in that that would bring about. The pandemic constraints, they influenced the San Souci being allowed to have limited temporary outside dining, but this was not granted for permanency. Currently, even without the sought-for allowances, there is unwanted noise, including a constant irritating sound from their compressor, which can be heard in neighboring yards. Outdoor lights left on at all hours without particular reason. Increase in traffic, litter in neighbor shrubbery, I picked up beer bottles, smell of the garbage from the dumpsters in neighboring yards. I'm kitty-cornered to this. Need of extra vigilance on the road for walkers and bikes because of the traffic and parking issues. Now, I've had my summer home here on Mason Road for over 40 years. In the past 25 years, I doubt I've been in the San Souci for more than five times, and the last being in the summer before the pandemic, when I needed to enter the San Souci to find a customer who had parked in my parking spot in my backyard, so I couldn't even get into the grounds. He didn't even apologize. Some of the charm of Cleverdale, this is its residential appeal, not being an extension of some, some Lake Georgia village activity. We don't want to lose our historic, unique character. I even have one of the original books of how Cleverdale got its name from eight, from 19, 1882. I strongly urge you to decline the application request, and I'm Janet Ruthers Stasio. You've heard my name mentioned by my neighbors or things that they found people on my property. Thank you very much for your time.
So anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Greg Terese. I'm a resident of the town of Queensberry and a member of the East Side Lake Community and a particular fan, believe it or not, of this restaurant. I've got many friends that live in this area. I have many friends that frequent it. I have many friends that moved into Cleverdale because of the fact that they had a neighborhood restaurant. I understand that there's two sides to every story. There's two perspectives on what should be allowed and what shouldn't be allowed. But the truth of the matter is, this restaurant has been here for years. The gentlemen that now own the restaurant are trying to build on something that they've visioned. They took over the restaurant because they knew it was a vital part of the community. There are those of us that live here year-round and love that restaurant. We go there in the off-season when the tourists aren't around. And the guys that bought this place said, "We want to keep that tradition going. We want to offer the residents of the East Side of the Lake a place to go, a place to congregate, a place to call their own a community." That's exactly what these gentlemen have done. They invested a significant amount of money into this restaurant to try to make it better, to make it brighter, to make it the home that a lot of Cleverdale never had before. I lived on Cleverdale during the prior ownership, and it was a mess. It wasn't run well. It wasn't respectful of the community. The owners weren't putting money into the property. And as a result, it reflected poorly on the finished product. That's not what we have here before you today. These gentlemen are asking to provide an outdoor experience that every restaurant in the Adirondacks has the ability to do. This is a use that's been granted time and time again. And we're asking that you give this restaurant the same ability as any other. Are there concerns with respect to parking? Yeah, I get that. Noise? Yeah, I get that. But can there be a balance? Can this board provide a balance so that the restaurant can provide to the community and the community can benefit from the restaurant? There's no doubt in my mind. There is a happy balance. I'm confident that this board can find that. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Sure. Somebody else?
I'm Len Romeo. I live at 282 Cleverdale Road. I remember we bought the house in 2016, and shortly thereafter, the San Souci closed for a summer. And it was a pretty bad thing for a resident. We walk up there all the time. A lot of people walk up to restaurants. Not everybody drives up to the restaurant. I think it's a good thing for the community. I think a lot of people look forward to it. I think the people that own the restaurant right now... I mean, one of the guys is hustling the restaurant. He's an accountant. I don't know why he wants to do it. It makes no sense to me. I wouldn't do it if I were a businessman, but he is. And, you know, we just... We appreciate the place. And obviously, it's been through a lot of owners, and it's having trouble making it with 105 seating. Maybe if we gave them the extra seating, they might be able to succeed. You know, something might take into consideration. But I like the restaurant a lot. We go there a lot, four or five times a week, so...
Sure. Ma'am?
I'm Deb Miller. I wasn't going to speak tonight because speaking publicly is not my thing. I'd like to address what the gentleman just said. I live at 93 Mason Road. I share three boundaries. A lot adjoining them, that two property, and I own across the street in the old Pine Rest Hotel. He just said that the San Souci is a wonderful place to go. I don't deny that. He also said that he felt that they should expand just to make it. I'd like to point out that there is a downstairs of the San Souci that is perfectly capable of taking chairs and tables and feeding people that is still enclosed indoors. I have lived there for 47 years. I moved there when I was 11. I'm the one who found Walter Evans dead under my dock as a kid. I watched the San Souci burn down. I grew up there. That's my home. And I have never had a problem with the San Souci that couldn't be handled. But it has never been an outdoor venue. And now that it has been an outdoor venue for one year, and no, I did not complain. I didn't complain because COVID, but believe me, it bothered me every day. My windows were left shut all last summer because of noise, because of the smell. And I don't have air conditioning. I am not a McMillionaire on Cleverdale. I'm a kid who grew up there, when Cleverdale was not a place for McMillionaires. I do not wish to see outdoor seating. It can flourish as it always has. People keep saying that they went there as kids, that they enjoyed it, that they don't want to see it gone, and I agree. But it never existed outdoors, never. And that changes the game completely. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? So, we have a bunch of written correspondence.
Yeah, I'm just...
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. My name's Dan Courtney. Living Queensberry resident, lived on Cleverdale for years. I have a little different, maybe, perspective. I was Lake George Planning Board for seven years. I was the person spearheading the outdoor seating in... On the Lake George sidewalks for the restaurants. My occupation my whole life is owner, operators of restaurants. Filmed them, operated them. It took me two years to get, convince people and work with the village to understand that people want to eat outside. Old Montreal, I'd send pictures, nice patios. The business side of it, the reality is, is that once we added the seating outside to all these restaurants in the village, the insides declined quite a bit because people want to be outside in order to survive. You're in the Adirondacks in the summer. Outdoor seating, what will happen is that the people, instead of inside, they have no choice. They'll leave outside. There'll still be some inside, but it'll shift dramatically. When you go to the village and you walk down, patios are packed. You go inside, there's not a lot of people in there. Nobody wants to eat inside. That's just the reality of it. It's my profession, it's what I do. So, I understand also, you know, the people listening to everybody. I get it, the parking, the noise. The San Souci is extremely unique in the fact that, for us, it's like a community center. Without it, I wouldn't have met my girlfriend. I wouldn't have met my best friends. I wouldn't have... It's just very difficult to meet people, especially all the new people moving into Assembly Point, Cleverdale right now, Pilot Knob. I mean, we don't want them... No offense, we don't want them meeting by getting a letter from the town of Queensberry saying, "Hey, your neighbor is going to do a project. This is how you're going to meet them. Do you approve or not?" They don't know who the heck they are. It's nice to be able to meet people, and that's... It really is. It's kind of our community hall. But as far as the professional perspective, it's critical to have outdoor seating. How you guys balance it, that's on you. I get that. Your job is to balance the community. And... But professional perspective is that less people will be inside, more people will be outside. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Sure. Hold on. He's ahead of you.
How you doing? I'm David Hartman. I live in Queensberry, and I live on Assembly Point Road, so... No, I don't walk there. I'm not walking through Nine L. I suppose some people do. But nobody can pass my house without driving to the Sands. They're driving to the Sands, so I get a ride sometimes. I've only been here eight years, but this is the best community I've ever lived in. It's fantastic. The Sands is a big part of that. First time I went there, somebody worked in there. I walked in, they said, "Dave, Dave, who are you, Dave from..." "Oh, Dave, this is Paul. Paul lives in Assembly Point." "Oh, Dave just bought a house down the road from..." Wonderful place. That's the atmosphere. It goes well beyond the Sands. I think it's Queensberry in general. It's a wonderful community. This is a local place, you know, to go beyond the restaurant aspect of it. They let the water quality associations meet there. They've opened it up to birthdays on off-season times for some of the people in the community. Christmas wreath making in the wintertime has gone on there. Just a lot of... They're part of the community. Just consider that. It's... They do a lot for the community. It's an amazing place. Thank you.
So, hold on just a second. Hello?
He's just here.
This is Queensberry zoning board of appeal.
Oh, no.
Sure. Go ahead. So, first you have to identify yourself. Let me see if I can... Go ahead.
Sure. My name is Brad Thayer. I'm a resident directly across the street from the Sands and dating that Mason Road. Probably very quick, the chairman of this committee indicated that, you know, these were simple decisions, straightforward. The first would be, is the parking adequate? It's clearly not. So, I think there's a pretty clear yes or there that no further variance would be granted. Secondly, you all seem to be considering whether a property that is zoned as residential can be used as commercial, and whether you want to grant a variance to that.
No, that's not the issue here.
Okay. What is the issue, please?
The issue, or the... The property has already received a special use permit to be commercial, so that's not something that we're going to decide on.
The residential property has been granted a special use permit to be used as commercial?
Yep. So, no. So, the variance being requested...
Hold on a second. Go ahead. Hold on just a second. Go ahead.
Mr. Thayer, so the variance that's being sought for the residential parcel is relevant to the size of the parcel?
So, there's no decision being made tonight on commercial or non-commercial use?
I understood that from what the chairman indicated. Maybe I misunderstood.
I'm the chairman.
That the second question was whether you all would grant a variance on a residential property to be used in a commercial way. I'm not sure why that would be granted.
Sure.
I appreciate that everybody has... That certain people have indicated that, you know, we shouldn't look to close the Sands. I don't mean anybody talking about closing the Sands. I also, you know, take it from one of the previous speakers that, you know, it's a good idea to have outdoor seating for a restaurant. That's great. It's worked for me like Lake George Village. None of us chose to live in Lake George Village. We chose to live on Cleverdale. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, go ahead.
My name is Jeff Holden. I live 256 Cleverdale Road. Typically, we'll have guests over. They'll park at my yard, then we walk down to the Sands. And last year during COVID, we always sat outside. So, I agree with Dan Courtney. You'll probably see a shift of more people sitting outside than inside. So, I think the parking issue is a little bit overblown. And I hope the board could come up with some sort of balance that allows them to have some outside seating, because we prefer. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Sure. So, okay.
My name is Tim Collins. I live in North Queensberry. I grew up in Cleverdale. I'm a former owner of the Sands in the early 2000s. And I think some of the things you hear tonight are accurate in regards to that it's really a community gathering place. It's really a place that brings the community together. Jeff, who just spoke, I remember, when he bought his house...
What was your first stop?
Sands. The Sands. So, it really does bring the community together. I think some of the parking issues, I've seen them. I've worked at the Sands, I don't know, since 1987. I currently work there two nights a week, so I see it frequently. And I would say that the parking issues, are there occasional parking issues? I would say yes. Are there... Has it been overblown here tonight? In my opinion, I would say yes. And as a former owner, I know the struggles of owning a restaurant. And in a big capacity, I certainly think that having the variance to operate the outdoor space would be warranted and certainly be helpful to the owners. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Is anybody outside? Thank you. Okay. So, we have 38 letters?
Well, what I'm going to say is that some people have already spoken on both sides. So, in total, there have been 32 letters in support and six opposed. And generally, all the points that have been made in these letters were covered by people that were speaking. So, again, 32 in support, six opposed. And that's for both...
You mean, supporting the variances?
Well, the area variance is 28, 21, 2021, and the area variance, 32, 2021. There were 32 letters in support of granting them the variances and six opposed. They didn't separate them into different categories or variances.
Okay, so, let's see here. We got a couple of hands there. First person that I saw was the lady with the gray town... You have to come up here and identify yourself.
I'm Deb Miller, 93 Mason Road. And one who shares three borders with the San Souci. And I'd like to say that when you say that there are 36 in favor, none of those people are the people who are here tonight saying that they own property that is within 1,000 feet of the San Souci. And I'd like to ask, would any of you want to live? And I said before, I like the San Souci. It's always been indoors. But would you like it if you lived in a community where they changed the rules after, what, 70 years? People bought the property knowing the Sands was there. They knew it was inside dining. They pay their property taxes knowing the Sands is across the street. The fact that they're going outdoors is changing the entire ballgame and the entire history of the San Souci. And the people who are in favor of it are people who come and visit a couple of times a week. There are people that usually have summer residences there, and they bring their friends, and it's a fun place to party. And that's wonderful inside. But these are not people who share borders or the difficulties that come with the San Souci. Like I said, I'm in favor of the San Souci and always have been. We bought our property there. My parents did, and my grandparents did. And they knew that dining was indoors. That's the parameter. Now you are changing it.
We aren't doing anything.
I know, but I am saying the people who are in favor of it are not the people who are going to be affected by it. They're the people who enjoy it. And that is very different. My quality of life...
If they enjoy it, then it's also affecting them, isn't it?
They've enjoyed it for all these years. They keep saying they've enjoyed it for years, but now they want more.
So, we heard you. So, the lady with the sleeveless, I saw you next.
I'm Caitlin Miller, one of the owners of 93 Mason Road. My comments really piggyback off of my mother's comments. You know, it's lovely that so many people support the Sands. It really is. It's a wonderful part of our community. We are not asking for any of that to be taken away. All of these people can still come and meet their friends at the Sands. All of these people can still come and enjoy a burger and walk to the Sands if they want to. But again, to reiterate, they are not sharing the borders. They have not had my entire lifetime of parking problems, of lighting problems, of noise problems. It's not them who are being woken up in the middle of the night when there's a loud conversation in the parking lot. It's not them who has to pay for the new fence on their property when people parking at the Sands hit it as they leave after having a few too many drinks. This is... This is really something where, you know, I love that there's so much support for the Sands, but it really should be taken into consideration. Those of us who live right next door, because it really is a completely different scenario. I don't think any one of you would sign up to live across the street from the garrison or any of the nightclubs in Lake George Village. And we're talking about it like it's the same community, and it's not. This is a residential community that we all hold very close to our hearts. We're not asking to take anything away from the residents who already enjoy the Sands. We are just asking for once to consider the people who live next door. Thank you.
Sure. The lady in the yellow? Same thing. Okay. So John, you're in. Have anything to add?
Just to sum up, as you guys know, there, you don't get 32 letters of support on anything. People usually don't show up if they have something to complain about. And if you look at the addresses, the, these are all people in the Southern Basin, Queensberry, Pilot Knob, Cleverdale, Assembly Point. Everyone, you know, if you look at where they are. So that's not true. This is a resource that is important as a gathering spot for everybody in that area. Yeah, there's, there are different impacts than if it was a house. But everyone's known that when they moved there. Restaurant preceded everybody. You know, I live next to Community College. There are times of the year where there's a lot of traffic, but it's just, you know, it's there because it's a resource.
You live next to the golf course. You gotta take a golf course out of your.
But there are community benefits, and when you live next to something that has wider benefits, you put up with some more impacts. But this is not a young restaurant. This is not a wild restaurant. I mean, you know, you can't, if somebody, you know, throws a beer bottle, that's ridiculous, and they shouldn't do that. But you can't criticize the owners of the restaurant because somebody finds a beer bottle. And that's not the kind of place it is. You know, it's old, white-haired guys like me. It's just, it's not kids. It's not, you know, it's not a nightclub. It's a tavern. But it's an important place, as I think you've heard tonight. And outdoor dining is a really nice thing to have, and it's not hooting and hollering. And we're not asking for music outside, and we're not asking for that whole parcel to be commercial, to be restaurant. It's just that little paper patio area.
But it does create a whole other problem. When the wind blows, things are gonna blow off the table. Like you said, there's not bottles out there, but if there's bottles, people are drinking at tables, yes, bottles can be thrown. Or if it's inside, you're not gonna get bottles thrown outside. Papers aren't gonna blow around.
I think we could suggest a couple of mitigation now that we've heard the neighbors, you know, I think we could talk about a fence to enclose that area. As I said when we started, it's in the center of that area with parking on both sides. So, you know, there are some things that we could do to, to address the issues that were raised to give people, give the board some more comfort. You know, right at the top of the area where the patio is, you know, after we talked about it, we could do a stockade fence there. So, you know, that would, no one would be looking at it, and nothing would be blown away. So, you know, there are plenty of things we could talk about.
I've been there numerous times, John. It's a fun place to go. I enjoy it, but I don't live next door, so I, I could see.
Well, let's, let's, so we'll have one more.
I gotta show you, I gotta show you one thing. You have to read this. This is a letter that was sent out to people not next door, people in the neighborhood. And it says.
So first of all, identify yourself.
Nick and Zavis, 97 Basin Road, Ari Sands Souci, in, in, application for special use. I'm gonna read this fast. Okay. Dear Chairman Carver, McCabe, and Board Members. And it tells you how to fill this in. We strongly support the approval of 24 permanent outdoor dining seats at the Sands Souci restaurant. We want the planning and zoning boards to know the Sands supports the entire Lake community as a local gathering place for over 100 years. The patrons are mostly residents who understand that parking can be limited in many patrons' park or carpool or park too deep on the Sands property. During the COVID pandemic, temporary outdoor seating worked out very well, and there was no excess noise or other area impact. We urged the boards to approve the applications. This was the propaganda that was sent out to everybody but the people next door. Okay? This is the propaganda. And you've got the letters, and this is the form. All right? And I can give this to you.
Sure.
You know, because my brother signed that, and he felt hoodwinked afterwards. So, and he's a big patron of the Sands. And he said, hey, they didn't say anything about 48. They said 24. That's what it says.
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to. Close. Close. I'm going to hold the board, and I'm going to start with Kathy. Well, first of all, we're going to address two separate issues here. So the first, we're going to address the issue of the 333 Cleverdale, which is.
Can I ask, John, a question?
Sure.
A few years ago, and I've been on the board for a long time, so it may be longer than a few years ago, the Sands Souci came before us and asked to have the parking lot used. Was that for outdoor dining? Was it for a waiting area? What was, what was?
It was for a waiting area. That was a prior owner?
Yes.
For a waiting area. It wasn't, I don't believe there's ever been a request for.
So that was, that was when you were granted relief for the use of the parking lot?
What happened there, I think that was the time when, when the holding tanks were put in instead of the septic field. I think that was a series of upgrades that happened at that point. And that was a request for an outdoor waiting area, but it was in a different.
Was it used for dining at that, before last year?
No.
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 Was the second lot used for parking, a use for dining outdoors last year?
No. There's never been outdoors.
Okay.
All right. So first, we're going to address 333 Cleverdale, which is basically.
Order of density for me.
The, no, that's.
The restaurant.
The restaurant parking lot, or the restaurant.
Parking spaces.
Oh, okay. All right. And I'm trying to find the spot.
So it's, they're, they're required 44.
Right.
But they only have 17 available.
And my form says 40, but maybe that's elsewhere. That's, that's, I think that's a big ask, so I'm a no.
Okay. So Jim?
The outdoor seating is a complete departure from the currently existing special use permit. And I think that the addition of taking away parking spaces to create, that is wrong thing, wrong direction we should be going in. I think that the neighbors have substantiated that there has always been problems with, and everybody recognizes the problems, the long-term effect of too many people arriving at the same time at the Sands at certain times of the year when it's very oversubscribed. But I think at this point in time, it would be wrong for the board to approve this request. I don't think that the board can approve the request for outdoor seating because it's a grand departure from what's already existing.
Roy?
Yeah, I think, I think everybody's has to take a step back here. The one thing, we just went through two, two years of hell, and we're still going through it. We don't know what the situation will be, you know, six months from, a month from now, whether, or a year from now. So we have to be very careful about making changes to zones or variances for things that didn't exist prior to last year. Because last year was an exception. We, we did things we, that we never did before. And that includes restaurants. They had to survive. People going to restaurants had to do things differently. So I don't think we should be making changes right now for, that'll be permanent beyond this year. Hopefully, we won't have to live through, we lived through the last couple of years. But we, if we make a change now, if we grant us variance, we're going to live with it permanently. It will be a permanent, permanent change that may not be acceptable any longer after the summer. But beyond that, I think squeezing in more people into an air, into a 0.27 acres plus with the permeability and parking issues that it has, I think it would be wrong, and I would be against it.
John?
Like I said before, I like going to the Sands. It's a great place. I'd love to see outside seating there. It'd be, it'd be, it'd be a little bit more fun to go to. But I'm not gonna stop going there just because they don't have seating outside. And I don't, and I don't live right there, but I boat around there, and I do walk from, from Harris Bay Yacht Club and do enjoy it. But I just don't think it's fair for people that live right there to change what's been going on there for 100 years, so I'd not be on board as is.
Ron?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't yacht around there the way you do. I also like the restaurant, but you know, it is what it is, what it is. And, and what I find is the people that come out and talk are the ones that we, I mean, you know, whether it's 32, four, or six opposed, that's, those are the people, anybody can sign their name. When this, when I was presented with this, I looked at this, and I remember going to that restaurant. And I do, I do sympathize with the gentleman that talked about outside seating is causing more people to come. I got that. I go to other restaurants that don't have outside seating and wish they had it too. But this restaurant is an indoor seating restaurant. We had to go and give the Recovery Grill a variance for parking, and how much asphalt is in front of that place? You know, here you have 17 parking spaces, and if we increase the capacity by, it's not 50%, it's something less, you know, how many more people are gonna come? And it's not right. So I, I mean, we state in our words that the board also finds the variance request under consideration is a minimum necessary. That don't work. Okay? So I'm, I'm totally against it.
Brett?
One of the first times my wife and I went out on the lake last season, it was a tough time in the area. It was a tough time in the country. COVID was going on. Everybody was stressed out. Businesses were struggling. Restaurants were really struggling. Car guys were struggling. Contractors were struggling. We sat outside, and we had a meal. And I enjoyed it. I really did. There were two tables that were sitting outside, us and another one. It was not busy. It may very well have gotten busy later in the season. It was not, it was not busy then. I fully appreciate both sides of this issue. I fully appreciate the history of the Sands. I used to have a very good friend that still lives in Tecundawide, and we used to take a golf cart down, probably for good reason. And we really enjoy the place. This has nothing to do with my feelings of the Sands, the success that I want the Sands to have. I realize the difficulties which are inherent in the restaurant industry. I realize the difficulties that are inherent in a seasonal business. I get it. I know it's a tough nut to crack. But my issue here is it has been an indoor place, and we are now trying to change the game. And I can't be part of that. And what I've tried to do here over the last hour and a half is figure out a happy medium. I've tried to figure out a way to broker a deal. How do we put up a fence, as attorney-lapper indicates? How do we, maybe limit the hours was something I was coming up with, to broker a deal, to find a happy balance, as Mr. Teresi in the back here said. And I've tried to do that, but I'm not coming up with one. And I know, as hard as I've tried to do that, I ultimately have to fall on the side of what is right for the contiguous property owners, what is right for the folks that live there year-round. And so I am against this, and it's not that I'm against it because I am anti-Sands. I am very pro-Sands. I'm looking forward to dining there this year. But I will be a no on this, Mr. Chair.
So the issue here is if we, okay, for the first property, 333, the outside tables, then that would require 44 parking spaces, and we only have 17. And we've, okay, reduced parking spaces before, but not to this extent. 44 to 17 is a big stretch. Now, in defense of that, there's not a place that you can go on Cleverdale Road where parking isn't an issue, and where the neighbors complain about the other neighbors taking their parking spaces, and the summer residents coming in and taking the parking spaces. So, you know, I can't support that reduction, 44 to 17. So.
I should ask a quick question, because I voted on this already. Are we only voting on the parking on this 3333, or is there an issue?
Yeah, I said, we're, the first time, we're, we're just a 333. Then we have to go to 337. They're two separate applications.
And it says relieve permeability? That's not.
That's permeability. We determined is not an issue because they're not changing permeability.
Okay.
So before we get to a vote, I'm not used to seeing 0 to 7. But we came in here knowing that, you know, that neighbors were not gonna be happy about this. And I've got some suggestions to, you know, to mitigate this further than what we've asked for the board would consider. So one is to reduce it to just 24 tables on the paved area in the center. Get rid of the picnic table area near the parking. But what we also could do would be to say that we're not increasing the number of tables on the whole site, because if they were gonna be outside, then we wouldn't be using the downstairs. So, you know, so we keep it at the same number of seats that we have now, that there would never be any more than what's there. But we'd like to have 24 outside because during the summer, it's nice to sit outside. We can offer a fence.
Well, then that wouldn't require any action from us then.
Well, yes.
Why?
No outdoor seating.
That's special use. That's part of the special use. That's not what we're talking about here. All we're talking about with the property 333 is 44 parking spaces are required, but only 17 are provided.
And you were correct on 333, but 337, because.
We haven't approached 337 yet. Yeah.
My question is whether the board would feel more comfortable if we limited it to a total of 24 outdoor, and that we reduce the number indoors. If we, you know, it's raining, everybody's indoors, and the weather's nice, and they're outdoor, they can't have more, more people. It's just nice to have outdoor seating. And we certainly can limit the hours.
So I guess I need some.
He's gotta withdraw the whole application.
No, so, not necessarily. So the idea of utilizing the, not having, not utilizing indoor seating, but allowing outdoor seating also would trigger that variance because you're also event, because of the, how did I have it in my head? The seating.
Well, how would we ever enforce it?
But you're at 17. I mean, that, that's what you would be granting.
Well, I mean, how would we ever enforce?
That's not, that's not the issue.
Taking away one table inside to add one table outside.
Depends on the weather.
So your, your relief that's being requested is to maintain 17 parking spaces for a number of tables that are being proposed that will be outside during the summer months?
And so what you're saying is that if you gave up those tables inside?
Yeah.
Then you wouldn't need 44 spaces?
Right. Just what's there.
To your, to your point, it would have to be tied to a definable metric. Saturday night in August, when it's jamming in there, how are we gonna know if a table went inside to outside or versa? There's no way I'd try.
Well, that's enforcing.
You're taking away parking.
Yeah, but, but if we grant you a variance here, you have to have some way to know that, you know, that variance could actually be enforced. You know, we aren't gonna have codes and enforcement up there every weekend.
So that, in that case, if we're gonna move toward something like that, I would ask that the board table so we can evaluate what those enforcement abilities are, because I don't know them off the top of my head. And I'd, I would prefer to evaluate, have it evaluated and discussed with the zoning administrator and staff, as well as the applicant.
All right. So we'll take, we'll take your proposal into consideration, but we'll ask you to table at this particular time.
I just want to say that the only way I would consider any adjustment would be is if the second, the 337 gets taken off the table. Well, yeah. Roy, the only issue with 337, if you just look at the map, is that that's where the seating area is. I mean, I guess we could reconfigure.
While you're saying that, for this, this property, 333, you have.
Four or two tables.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's, isn't that your 24?
I was, I was proposing to take the picnic table.
There's six, six, yes, six. There's six at the table, so.
On that.
Right. Well, let's, we're taking up too much time here. Let's, let's table this one, and we'll move on to the next one.
I mean, and what Roy said, there's, if that was important to you, we had to reconfigure the pavement area and put the 24 seats on this, on the restaurant site, there's probably a way.
I'm not even saying I would, I'm just saying, the only way I would consider is if there was a, the second variance, the second application variance was.
if there was a, the second, the second variance, the second application variance was going.
We'll, we'll look at reconfiguring it.
All right. So what are we tabling to?
To June?
Yeah.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I apologize. My June agenda has, you know, I, I try to be a little bit flexible with some applications and unfortunately I would move it to the July agenda.
Okay. So table it to July with pertinent changes to be submitted to the board by the middle of June.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table area variance 28-2021 till July of 2021 and any new information by middle of June of 2021.
So we have a motion, can I have a second please?
I'll second that.
Brett, call the vote please.
DeRico?
Yes.
DeHanco?
Yes.
Hamon?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Hannah White?
Yes.
You got it?
Yes.
In the cave?
Yes. Okay, so now we have the issue of 337, which is floor area, permeability, setbacks, and restaurant use in a five acre where only .15 exists. So we have...
Why don't we table that as well?
Okay. We have a great number.
That's also till July?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to table area variance 32-21, 2021 till July with any new information submitted by June of 2021.
So I have a motion, can I have a second please?
I'll second.
And just for clarification, that's the first meeting in July for the plant, for the zoning board.
Okay, first meeting.
So we're broken.
Brett seconded?
I'll second it again, sure.
So call the vote please.
Turn to work.
He stepped out.
Is he a debit?
Yes.
Yes.
Hamon?
Yes.
DeHanco?
Yes.
DeRico?
Yes.
In the cave?
Yes.
We'll just wait for, for June.
Can I get that clarified? Both, the 333 and the 337 are going to move until July.
Right.
I take notes.
So we just have to wait for... Actually, we don't have to, he's not going to make any of that difference.
So they both can be tabled to the 21st of July, right? That's the first meeting, right?
I apologize, I was just trying to look on my calendar which the first meeting in July is.
Our next application is AV 30, 2021, Town Fair Tire.
Maria, did you need them to finish that vote or no?
Yes, no, basically.
They need to finish that vote?
I know you're sick.
Now, we're not sick, you're not. Yes.
We did, we...
Hope you had supper before you...
Is this a record? Is this a record?
We're going to his house.
You're busy tonight.
I'm going to give this...
After all the work they did to the building, they kind of, you know, they want to tear it down.
Did we all go in the town?
No, I just, last night I started out in Bolton, I had to go back to Queens, we were in Queens, I was in Bolton, DBA. Just this economy right now, everyone's buying real estate. Nope, there's no more, there's no product. Don't worry.
Yeah, no, but...
If you guys want me to leave this in, I can start. Give me time to say...
You have a license to drive, but you got to get your license before you...
The applicant proposes to remove an existing 2,740 square foot building to construct a new 7,269 square foot tire sales and service facility. The project includes new parking area, stormwater management, lighting and landscaping. The site plan for the new commercial use and building in CI zone and for buffers. Relief request of the setbacks, that's per section 179-3-040, dimensional requirements. The new building is to be located 57.4 feet from the front property line where a 75-foot setback is required. Minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be possible to reduce the size of the building. The relief requested may be considered minimal relevant to the code. Relief requested is 17.6 feet. The project may be considered to have minimal impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the area and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes to remove an existing 2,740 square foot building to construct a new 7,269 square foot tire sales and service facility. The site is proposed to have 42 parking spaces where 37 is, are required. Plans also show truck delivery traffic, truck traffic delivery. And the plans also indicate the building location is designed to have a runway on the north side allowing customers to access the base to the rear for appointments. Floor plans show the sales and the display area facing Route 9 and the service area to the rear of the building. There are going to be six service bays.
For the record, John Lapper with Rob Osterhout from Bowler Engineering. So Town Fair has 101 locations in New England, they have one in New York, this will be their second in New York. The, very different than what we have in town in the area in terms of a tire business. The front of the building is a showroom, retail, where they have fancy wheels and tires displayed, a waiting area and the service areas in the back, they don't do anything but replace tires, align, front end alignment and, and wheels. They don't do general auto repairs at all. By moving the building closer to the front than the 75-foot setback, it's better for the neighbors in the back because we're moving it away from the residential, it's a next to residential area. So we think it's advantageous. It's closer to the road than what the Pizza Hut was, it's a foot closer than what's there now. It certainly looks appropriate, but I think it's better in terms of compatibility with the net position. Laura was grilling me about this, the main concern would be noise. And this operation is air conditioned, so the, the garage doors are always closed and they set, you know, this is just different than what we're used to. The compressors are, the top end, you can talk in front of them in, in the shop. So the neighbors aren't going to hear anything because the doors will always be closed, that can be a condition, that's just how these guys operate. Retail up front, small service in the back just for tires and, and wheels and a much nicer update of the site than, than what's there now. We've proposed, we talked about it last night with the planning board who unanimously recommended this, fence and all new plantings in the back, but there's room for a bunch more plantings in the back and we'll talk to the planning board about that when we get back there with them. That's the justification for the, for the variance, better to move it a little closer to Route 9 than into the residence. There's not permeability, green space, no other variances, everything conforms. But let me ask Rob to go through the details and show you the side.
If I speak from here, is that okay or...
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Rob Osterhout, Bowler Engineering. I wanted to just orient everybody to the site. We're 863 Route 9, the former Pizza Hut site, which is just south of Walmart and the Harbor Freight store here. So this is the site, existing access into the site and the Pizza Hut building off to the north side of the site. The existing building actually is non-compliant with the northerly side yard setback, it's just under 20 feet, it's 19.3 or 19.4 feet. So that's non-compliant today. We are, as part of the proposal, increasing that setback to be compliant, so we're eliminating that one non-conformance there. John mentioned that we're moving the building closer to the street than the Pizza Hut. Just to clarify that, we're actually putting the building one foot further back on the site than what the pizza hut is. So, so the setback is actually increasing, the non-conformance on the front yard setback is actually decreasing as part of this project by one foot. And I also wanted to point out that the southeastern corner, if you're looking at the plan on the screen now, north is up the page, the southeastern corner of the building is compliant. It's just that we have the unique geometry of this parcel that requires us to seek the variance for that northeast of the corner of the building. And again, we're decreasing the existing non-conformance by one foot with this variance request. Other than that, the site layout is pretty straightforward, you can see it on the plan, we're maintaining the existing access into the site. We've got parking on the site that's adequate for the business purpose. We have reduced the parking from what's out there today from the former Pizza Hut use. There were 51 spaces, we're down to 42 with this plan. There are existing retaining walls on the site, all the northwest and south sides, some and the majority of those are remaining. The proposal is to modify one wall on the south side and the southwest corner of the site. As John mentioned, the service bays are to the back of the building, however, the space is conditioned, meaning that the employees have air conditioning and heated spaces, so the doors won't be open for the service. This footprint also is a six bay, six service bays, one for alignments and the other five for tire changes. The normal Town Fair Tire footprint is seven bays, so they've actually gone with a smaller building for this site than what they would normally do. And with that, I think that covers like the highlights that I wanted to hit.
So do we have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, what, what is the stockpile area? What's that supposed to be all about?
In the southwest corner of the site, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yep. So there's two concrete pads there. One would be for the trash importer and then the other would be for what's called a tire cage.
Okay.
So tires that are taken, taken off of vehicles and stored for recycling would be kept in that tire cage.
And they somehow...
It's fenced, it has privacy slats on it.
They get picked up once a week.
It gets picked up once a week by a tire recycler during normal business hours and it's also got a roof over it. I would like to point out too, that I mentioned retaining walls, this site lies lower in elevation than the properties to the west and to the south. Those retaining walls, you know, have, are above them. So it's not like our site is elevated above the adjoining properties.
Other questions?
No outdoor eating.
So public hearing has been advertised, I'm almost afraid to open it, but I guess I better. So I'm going to open the public hearing and see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this application and invite anybody that's on the outside if they want to speak on this application to call in at area code 518-761-8225. And if you're calling in, I would just ask that you wait until the person who's speaking is done, so we don't interrupt that person. So, go ahead.
Keep this short. I'm Blair Davies, I live at 15 Greenway Drive, which is, that's going to be in my backyard and I'm not against this, whatever. I just have a question, we talked about a fence, is that going to be similar to what the Harbor Freight's got?
So what I would ask is that you address your questions to the board and then that information will get addressed.
We'll get that information for you.
Okay. I don't have any big problem with this, if you're going to have the debate, I was just worried about honking horns and I can hear Walmart.
Yeah.
Air guns and all of their stuff.
It's fence and fence.
So, so give up yours. And then so I'll ask you then to respond to that?
Yes.
Just state your name again.
Yes, Rob Osterhout, Bowler Engineering. In response to that question, the project is proposing a six-foot high privacy fence, 460 feet of six-foot privacy fence along the back of the property, the west side and the south side of the property that is shown on the plan. In addition, the plan shows that we are putting in 50 trees along the south and west sides of the property, along the perimeter of the property to help with screening in addition to the fence.
Will the fence have any noise reducing properties?
It's a standard, you know, six-foot high privacy fence, wood fence.
Yeah, okay.
What kind of trees are you putting in?
Right now, our plan shows arborvitae's. However, we've been talking with our landscape architect and we think we're going to go with something more appropriate with white pines.
No, no.
They don't last in this area.
That's what's out there today and we're, we have a concern with the arborvitae surviving in that location under the existing tree. If white pines are, you know, a concern, we can talk to our landscape architects about some other options.
Spruce are nice. It's only, it's only a person. They're on sale right now.
Okay, other, are there other, so the lady in blue?
My name's Catherine Hunt, I live at 24 Greenway North, which is on the southwest side of this proposal here. Right now, in the summertime, I can still see Pizza Hut's red roof, that's all I can see. But with, when Harbor Freight went in, they came backwards and cut down all those trees, so the houses like is straight onto Route 9. No buffer, no nothing. They put up a fence, I don't know where his fence is going to start at six feet, is it going to start on his property? Or is it going to start further up the hill? So the six feet is actually what we're going to see and not straight out to Route 9. Is he going to cut down more trees in my backyard? The lighting is going to be a problem, I know the noise and the traffic is going to be a problem. Right now, I can, from Harbor Freight being built, I can see through to their driveway coming off of Route 9. And this is just going to add to it, it's too much commercial use in that particular, you got Walmart, you got Harbor Freight, and now you're going to have this. It's too much in that short of span of space. I hate the idea. I've lived there for over 20 years and is he going to cut down more trees in the wooded area toward our house like Harbor Freight did?
Okay. So I should again, address her concerns there?
Rob Osterhout, Bowler Engineering, just to respond to those items. The fence, the six-foot privacy fence will be installed at the property line, which is the high part of the property. Like I said, the grades drop from the westerly property line and the southerly property line towards the Pizza Hut building. So the fence will be on the high part of the property as will the trees, the trees will be along that perimeter as well. As far as the clearing, I do acknowledge that there has been some clearing on this site. That is not an act that was undertaken by Town Fair Tire. Town Fair Tire is merely an applicant who is entertaining an option on this property. The trees were cleared by others prior to Town Fair Tire coming into the picture, however, Town Fair Tire is proposing the 50 trees that I mentioned to help mitigate loss of the trees that, you know, have previously been cut.
So maybe you had...
So you're not cutting any more trees?
Good point, thank you for reminding me. As far as cutting trees, we're, we're maintaining the retaining walls along the north, the west and a portion of the south side. There's a portion of the south side where we'll be relocating one of the walls and there will be some liner clearing in that area.
Right on our property line?
No, it won't, it won't go back to the property line. It'll be consistent with the, with the edge of the walls. Laura, if you can pull that plan up again, I can point out where that is.
Got a buffer.
I was trying to draw the fence line.
There's a buffer right there.
That's good, thank you. So roughly in the middle of the building, in the east-west direction here, from right to left that would be, you see the landscaped island on the south side of the parking lot down the beach, further to the right, that one there, Laura, the, the square-ish one?
In the middle.
Yep, that landscaped island in the parking lot. From that point to the left is where the wall is being relocated, over to the corner, so.
Relocated from where?
So right now, it, the wall is further into the parking field and we're relocating it further to the south.
You're getting rid of it?
We're not getting rid of it, we're, well, we're putting a new wall in, we're relocating the existing wall from where it is, go a bit further to the south.
Where are you going to be taking the trees down?
In that area.
So we'll be able to see straight through?
There's a lot of existing vegetation between that point and the property line. There's a lot of existing vegetation between that point and the property line.
And there'll be new trees planted.
And then we'll be putting in new trees and fencing as well.
And I hope they're not white pine, because that's just too much in that area. They're cutting down, and they're not planting ones.
Ma'am, you wanted to say something?
Yes, we're like, I'm Kathy Fraser.
So you have to approach the microphone and identify yourself?
I'm Kathy Fraser. I live at 22 Greenway North, which is my backyard butts up to everything he's just described.
Okay.
There's a six-foot chain link fence around the property now, and as I stand in my backyard, I can still count the number of people that go into Harbor Freight daily. And that's not climbing a ladder to see over the fence either. That's just standing in my backyard looking over the fence.
So, but he's south of Harbor Freight?
Yeah, closer to us.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's that, his property have to do?
Well, his six-foot fence is going to hide nothing.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And you've got trucks going in and out of there. You've got traffic in and out of there.
But you must have had that with Pizza Hut, right?
Not that much. The traffic, I don't know what the parking situation was.
Yeah, later hours. You had Long John Silver there plus Pizza Hut at one time.
Long John Silver's been gone for years.
But I'm saying it was there.
But that was fewer parking areas.
But they were later hours, probably later hours than what this store's going to be open, I would imagine.
Well, how would you like to live next to a tire place that's changing tires all the time, hear that compression?
Well, like you were saying there, it's going to be...
I don't believe that. I can hear it from Walmart.
Okay, so we've heard your concerns.
And the lighting too is going to be straight into our yards. Are these trucks going to get them out?
So we have...
Walmart.
Mike, turn.
Yeah.
My name's Brad Patch. I live like right in the middle of all that. Let me take you back a few years, '74, '75, when Pizza Hut went in there, they gave us a 50-foot buffer forever. Now, Al Boychuk, the owner, he clear-cut the first 25 feet last year about this time, and by the time somebody came, I called in the morning, got an answering machine, somebody finally came early afternoon and shut them down. They were on the last tree. We asked them what's going to happen? They said, oh, they're going to have to replant it. Well, it's been a year, nothing's happened, and now you're telling me they want to take away 25 feet of the buffer?
Well, wait a minute. He said he's putting in 50 new trees.
Yeah, they want to put white pine in. That's what they did way back then. You see the white pines? They're 100 feet in the air. All the vegetation's up here. I can see right through. We get lights and everything from the shop on the other side there, the warehouse. When Pizza Hut was there, they had a light in the parking lot right in my window. I sit there, watch TV with a light in my eyes, hold shade down. But the buffer not supposed to be touched. Hell, touched it. Now he's selling the property, getting out of it. I don't want to see the buffer go away. Whatever was in there, they took away. Big trees, little trees, it didn't matter. They did it just to get rid of it. Knowing something like this is going to come in and going to take that wall and cut it in. I don't want to see that.
Okay.
Mr. Patch, Mr. Patch?
Yes.
Your son sent a letter in?
No, my daughter.
Your daughter? Okay. You weren't going to be here, so you still want me to read this letter?
Well, that's tomorrow night.
You still want me to read this letter in?
That was for tomorrow night, more or less. You can read it if you want.
Well, I'm reading it, but you want me to read it in?
So is there anybody else here that would like to speak on this matter? So do we have letters?
Well, there's just this one letter, but it, he said it's for the planning board, but I'll read it anyway. Good afternoon. Both my father, Brad Patch, and I are unfortunately not going to be able to make the planning meeting regarding the Town Fair Tire on May 20th, as we both have to work that evening. I am hoping that this email will find its way. This is about, about the noise. I don't know if it refers, so I'll read the rest of it. As business owners ourselves, we are not opposed to other businesses going in just the particular nature of the business and the noise level that will be associated with it. Have you ever been to a Warren Tire or other service center? I don't know many people that can say they haven't. Just think back to the time when you were there and what you heard, the constant noise of all the air wrenches and all the other tools and how loud and annoying they are. In the summertime, imagine the noise while you're sitting, trying to sit and have a nice meal, do some gardening or relaxing on your back deck, not to mention hearing it while inside your own home. There will be no escaping day in and day out. The summer months will be twice as bad as the cooler months with all the doors open. However, in the cooler months, even with the garage doors down, you can constantly hear the noise of all of its tools. All the neighboring houses and behind the property, which surround it on two sides, are going to have to listen to the noise from early in the morning to whatever time they close. The sound travels quite so far, so I can only imagine that a good majority of the neighborhood will be able to hear the constant sound. Wouldn't that noise nonstop drive you crazy? I will definitely put one in an irritable mood nonstop. Residents of the neighborhood have worked extremely hard to be able to enjoy their homes and enjoy being outdoors and indoors for that matter without the constant irritation of that noise, cranking, zipping, and the talking of air wrenches. How would you like to hear that noise all day? People will not be able to go into their yard and enjoy them without constant irritation. On the summer day, being outside at my parents' house, you can even hear the Walmart Service Center at certain times, and that is quite a distance away, at which I can only imagine how the noise would travel if it is located behind my parents' home. There are many residents of the neighborhood that are at retirement age and are home mainly all day. They deserve the right to peaceful lives without the constant irritation and loud rattling noises. But I can only pray that you put yourselves in our shoes and hear that noise in your head. Some may have the opportunity to live in the neighborhood that are farther away from local businesses and are quite complete quiet and peace. However, many of us are where we can afford to live. And that's, thank you, Brett Patch, 8 Greenway North.
Anybody else?
I have a question for Laura. Is there, is there a buffer there that was supposed to be maintained?
Correct. So that, what the applicant is speaking of is that the, or in both the neighbor, that correct, there was a buffer to be maintained. When it did occur that there was clearing, the staff went out and identified with Mr. Boychuk that there was, sorry, I know you can't hear me. So the idea was that when he was, when he would come in for a site plan for the next project, whatever that was, that he was to present a planting plan, and at this point, this is what the planting plan is.
Let me give you a little more explanation. So Al Boychuk bought the property last July, I think, and didn't know anything about the buffer, which was unfortunate, but it was white pines that were very mature. They were leaning towards the Pizza Hut building in the 500-year-old trees, and he took them down as a safety issue. Craig called when he was, you know, just finishing up, and what he agreed to, as Laura said, was that when this site gets redeveloped, there would be another buffer planted. So what we've proposed, we talked about it last night with the planning board, and they're going to, it's not going to be white pines because they don't have an understory eventually. We talked to the planning board about a sufficient buffer. There's plenty of room for it here because the building is up closer to the road. So we've proposed a stockade fence, which you can't see through, and plantings on the inside, and there's a whole area for more plantings that I know that the planning board's going to specify suitable plants for that.
So the stockade fence will be six feet high?
Yes.
So in a backyard like that, what's our limit for height of fence?
So for a commercial property, it can be high as you wish it to be. There's no limit other than it probably can't be higher. I think there's an issue with having barbed wire fence atop of it.
But we're not talking about barbed wire, right?
I know.
So I wonder how high would we have to go to block the neighbor's view?
Walmart has theirs, I think it's about eight feet high. The planning board's going to come up with a whole buffer requirement. That's going to be a mix of fence and plantings. So if you want to just make it, you know, condition upon a suitable buffer at the planning board.
Well, and then the other thing I would say is you could put some noise retaining material on the fence to help it out.
I think that the condition that the doors have to be closed all the time is going to go...
Probably, but you know, this additional...
I don't know that that a fence is really going to make a difference with the noise.
Well, actually, it will. So what you could do would be, the wood itself is going to be a barrier, and so if you put like a foam material, a rigid foam material on the inside of the fence, what that foam material does is absorbs noise. Then the wooden fence reflects the noise back into the absorbing material, and so you have the double action of the absorption, and it's really an effective noise barrier. And so the best example...
Does that work outdoors, though? Is that going to withstand weather?
The best example of that was when they put in the ride at the Great Escape, the...
Steven David? Tornado?
He said...
The...
Yeah, the bobsled.
Bobsled.
Bobsled one.
And it didn't work either.
Oh, yes, it did. I'll tell you, I, my yard is not that, you know, I'm probably a mile away from that. And yeah, and it went from I could hear, you know, that slide all the time.
Are we getting to an area that's beyond our control?
But that's what I'm saying. Yeah, but we can make suggestions. Yeah, it's going to...
If you stay...
I mean...
If you make a condition that a suitable noise barrier has to be there, I think we should leave it to the planning board.
Okay, that's fine.
We're not qualified.
Yeah.
But a berm, like a six-foot berm, the trees on top.
So anyway.
Can I ask Laura a question?
All right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So...
Can I ask Laura a question?
Go ahead.
Laura?
Yes?
Does the, does the planning board usually ask for something similar to the light plan here, like a sound attenuation plan that shows where the decibels go out to?
There is no, there is no noise ordinance in the town of Queensberry, Co.
Okay, all right. So, but regardless of noise ordinance, do they request it as part of site plan with you?
No.
Oh, okay.
It, I would say that it has not occurred.
So I think we've had enough discussion here, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I look at this project, and it appears that they're leaving a buffer area behind the fence that is existing already. And, you know, they are, they are doing some plantings, and hopefully the planning board will come up with the right plantings to, to help the neighbors behind it so that they don't have to see as much. I, I'm in favor of the project the way it's presented.
John?
Yeah, they do sit in a hole there, and they're below this cement wall, and they're only asking for a setback, a small setback from the front, and it's a nice-looking project, and I'm sure the site planners and that planning board will address these other problems. So I'm all, I'm bored the way it is.
Roy?
Yeah, as long as we can add in the contingency that noise, some kind of noise protection or prevention fencing put, if you put in there, or whatever you want to call it, I'd be in favor of the project as presented.
Brett?
I'm in favor of the project. I think it's well thought out. I've heard, you know, what the neighbors are saying. I do respect 50 trees. I do think, you know, the white, the white trees are not the best idea. I would go with something else personally, but, you know, the AC, I've actually done to one of these locations, another part of the state. When the doors are closed, you know, being AC, being heated, relatively quiet, I'm not going to suggest, you know, if you're right up next to that door, you can't hear something, but it very much has a deafening sound based upon how they build these locations. So the fence, the new plantings, I would like to see, you know, an eight-foot fence as opposed to a six-foot fence, but I'm going to defer to our good friends on the planning board to sort all of that out. So with that said, I am in favor of the project.
Jim?
I'm basically in favor of the plan, but I think the planning board should really be the one that the neighbors should go to, because I think, you know, like your business model with the, with the doors on the back of the building is kind of the opposite of what we currently have in town. Almost all the commercial businesses that do tires have all the doors on the front side facing the roadside, which dissipates the sound and doesn't put it into a residential neighborhood. So I think that should be a consideration for the planning board. But as far as moving the building less than the 75 feet back, I don't have a problem with that.
Kathy?
Um, I mean, per our only purview we have here, they're really asking for a very minimal setback. So yeah, I'm in favor, but I reiterate what everybody else has said, that some sort of sound attenuation could be in the building if it's not in a fence, whatever you and the planning board work out looks for me. The lighting I see is included that plan, the plan metrics, so that looks good, too. I'm good.
And I support this project also. I think what's being asked of us here is about 17 and a half feet of relief off of 75, which is a pretty standard request, and nothing greater than what we're used to, and so I'll support this project also. So Ron, I'm going to ask you to craft a motion here and just condition this with some sort of sound...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to recommend we approve area variance AV 30-2021, Town Fair Tire, 863, State Route 9. As per the document prepared by staff, we find there is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties. As, as on the south side of this property, it meets code. Feasible alternatives are limited and have been considered by the board and are reasonable and have been included to minimize the request. The requested area variance is not, not really substantial due to the layout of the building. There is not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood and district. The alleged difficulty may be considered self-created. However, in addition, the board finds the benefit to the applicant for granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community. The board, the board also finds that the variance request of consideration is the minimal necessary. The board proposes the following condition. A, that some kind of a noise control and/or fencing be provided to shield the, the neighbors on the west, the western part of the, of the property. With that in mind, I want to recommend that we approve area variance 30-2021.
So we have a motion. Could I have a second, please? Brett, call the vote.
Ms. Yericko?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Salmon?
Yes.
Chul?
Yes.
Turnerwood?
Yes.
Mike David?
Yes.
Nikah?
Yes.
Thank you. We made everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you all done, John?
Yeah.
You don't want to stay?
I don't like staying.
Stay for a little more.
I can't believe you don't have them all, but...
And you got your, and your neighbor.
Maybe that's done.
Jim? Jim? Jim, you're right, though.
Don't worry, I have a 625 bus tomorrow morning. I got to pull out. Oh, sure. No, I'm a substitute school bus driver. Oh, sure, man. I crank them up, you know? Crank them up. Thursday's usually my golfing day, but I have a physical. I have a DOT, DOT piece tomorrow. So I accept it.
So you've got to be a...
I'm used to it. I get a...
These gentlemen look like they want to get through. They got the smile on their face.
They want to keep a very condensed...
That's right. They're going to be very, very brief.
Are you telling me we're out of time?
Yes. Come back next week.
So our next application is AV 31, 2021. We'd like to finally get done tonight. So Roy, would you read the application into the record?
They wanna keep a very condensed-
That's right, they're gonna be very, very brief.
You're telling me we're out of time?
Yes, we'll come back next week. So our next, uh, application is, uh, AV thirty-one, uh, twenty, twenty-one, uh, we like that. Wanted to get done tonight, so Roy, would you read the, uh, application into the, uh-
Yeah, the applicant made a, proposes a two-story addition of eight hundred, eight sixty-six square feet. A single-story one hundred and twenty-four square foot footprint master bedroom addition, and about a thirty, three hundred and forty-four square foot roof area over the existing front porch. The existing home has a footprint of nineteen hundred square feet and a floor area of thirty-one, thirty-seven square feet. Relief requested for setbacks per section one seventy-nine dash three, air zero four zero dimensional. The applicant proposes the two, new two-story addition to be located eight feet to the north property line. The covered deck is to be five feet where a twenty-foot setback is required. Relief requested for expansion of a non-conforming structure. Minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be limited due to the location of the exis, the existing home. Relief requested may be considered moderate relative to the code. Relief requested for north side setback is eight feet from the new garage house addition and five feet from the front covered deck where a twenty-foot setback is required. The project may be considered to have minimal impact and difficulty may be self, considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes residential addition to an existing home of nineteen hundred square feet, foot, floor area. There is to be a two-story addition of eight hundred and eighty-six square feet. A single-story of one hundred and twenty-four square foot and a three hundred and forty-four plus or minus square foot roof area over the existing front porch. The new floor area is to be four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine square feet. And the, the planning board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impact that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal. And that was adopted, uh, May eighteenth, twenty, twenty-one by unanimous vote.
How we doing?
Good evening, um, Nick Zeglin with Environmental Design Partnership, here with Jase Brown of Beersley Architect. The applicant, Mr. John Graziano of one ninety-five Assembly Point Road, uh, is proposing site improvements in the form of an attached garage addition on the west side of the existing house. Um, a master bathroom off the south side of the existing, uh, master bedroom, as well as the expansion of a covered, uh, covered deck off the front of the house. These additions will create a setback with relief requested on the northern property line for a side yard setback. The existing setback on the house is six point seven feet, and the proposed setback would be five feet, so an increase in one point seven feet. So there was a letter in support from the northern property owner. This difficulty would directly affect them, and they submitted a letter, uh, to the town in support of the project. Also part of these site improvements are a new septic system with a, uh, Elgin Enhanced Treatment Unit, as well as, uh, stormwater management onsite. There'll be a drip edge infiltration on the side to catch some of the new, uh, garage runoff, as well as a rain garden to catch the rest of the new roof runoff, as well as some of the existing. The applicant is also proposing to remove about sixteen hundred square feet of existing asphalt and transforming that to permeable pavers to reduce the imperviousness on the site. There's also an existing shed that was on the southern property line that was beyond a setback, so the applicant is moving that shed to be in compliance. Overall, we think all these site improvements outweigh the one point five-foot setback variance, and, uh, it's a good project as a whole. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any questions, thank you.
Do you have questions of the applicant?
No.
Anybody have questions? Seems pretty straightforward, uh, so, uh, public hearing, quick, close the doors. As advertised, uh, so at this particular time, I'm going to, uh, open a public hearing, see if there's, uh, anybody in the audience who would like to input on this particular project. Invite anybody, uh, on the outside who may have a comment to give us a call at five one eight, seven six one eight, two two five.
I have a lot of, uh, I, Robert Carbogdan. I'm the owner of one ninety-seven Assembly Point Road. My property abuts John Graziano's lot of the, on the north side. This is the side of the proposed addition requiring a variance due to the lack of the side yard setback. I have no issue with the proposed addition and wish him well in this construction project and hope the board will approve it. And that's, uh, one ninety-seven Assembly Point Road.
So we just gotta wait for another minute or so and-
Guess he's invited to the barbecue.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
No.
Since we're past, well, we're not past COVID, but we're on, it's like, do we still have to do that?
Um, yeah, that's, uh, uh, yeah, I, I don't think we've had any changes. You're, yeah, call in, the, well, not everybody is, the, the changes are all for people who are vaccinated. So everybody isn't vaccinated, so some people may not be comfortable with that, so.
So I'll just briefly, I know we've got a public hearing in the middle of it, but in reference to COVID, at this point in time for this meeting, um, we're doing, in next week's meeting, uh, it'll be in the YouTube, it's under discussion with the town board whether we continue with doing, um, future meetings with YouTube. I don't think that'll proceed that way, I think we're gonna go back to our original, um, pre-COVID situation where meetings were always, um, handled as a public hearing. You were either present or you wrote a letter.
That bus. Riz, two minutes up?
Why, why did you, why did you show all the pictures about the, the, the dock across the street?
Just to show the shoreline buffer.
Thank you.
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing, I'm going to poll the board, and I'm gonna start with Brett.
Uh, I'm in favor of this project, I think it's well thought out. I think it's minimal, we have a neighbor to the north that's in support, uh, I will be voting yes on this.
Ron?
It's pre-existing non-conforming being there that you're standing on, it's minimal, uh, minimal necessary, I'd be in favor.
John?
Yeah, I agree with my board members, great project.
Roy?
I'm in favor.
Jim?
I'm in favor.
Kathy?
Me too.
He's the last.
So, uh, you know, basically what we're asked, uh, here is to, uh, okay, uh, one point seven, uh, foot of, uh, setback from what's existing, uh, right now, and, uh, I think that's very, uh, minimal. And so I too support the, uh, project, so I'm gonna ask Kathy for a motion here.
Okay. Um, so the board has, I guess I start, I feel a little soft here. So, well, this is in relation to, uh, setback relief for, uh, area variance three one, twenty, twenty-one. Uh, applicant named John Graziano. Okay. Upon review of application materials and of the holding of a public hearing as well. Information, uh, upon review of the application materials, information supplied during the public hearing and upon consideration of criteria specified in section one seventy-nine fourteen, zero eighty-eight A of the Queensberry Town Code and chapter two sixty-seven of New York State Town Law, after some discussion, the resolution we find as follows. There is no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties. Feasible alternatives, really, we didn't need to consider them, uh, this is a very minimal request. Didn't need to be minimized or, you know, well, anyway. The requesting, uh, variance, I'm really tired, you know, it's been a while. The requesting variance, uh, is, is certainly not substantial, it's a small, uh, increase compared to what's existing. There is, um, apparently no adverse impact to physical environmental conditions in neighborhood or in the district, it is, it is a self-created hardship, uh, that's just one criteria, so. In addition, the board finds that the benefit of the applicant, uh, for the granting of the requested variance would outweigh, uh, the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The board also finds that the variance requested under consideration is the minimum necessary. We impose no conditions. And do I have to say anything else? Did I forget something?
No.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we recommend that we approve it.
And so, well, I said that in the beginning, but I'll say it again, we recommend that we approve, uh, area variance three one twenty-one.
So we have a motion, can I have a second please? Brett, you second that. Oh, we gotta make Brett, he, he said-
Brett, you raise your hand first.
Second, yeah.
Call the vote.
Mr. Erico?
Yes.
Can I go?
Yes.
Samon?
Yes.
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 Hell, yes.
Hell, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, he's the last.
You go first.
Not really.
Mr. Chairman, I think you-
Do you need any of this, do you want any of this?
All recommendations until she gets comfortable, you know, in her rhythm.
So, uh, at, at this particular time, I'm gonna recommend that we adjourn tonight's, uh, meeting. I'm in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, Captain. And there's no bar open for a hearing.